At this time, I'd like to call to order the Board of Education's meeting of the Suffolk Central School District for November 20th, 2018. Let the record reflect, all board members are present with the exception of Ms. Rehmard, who is on her way. The Chair would like to entertain a motion to go into executive session for the following purposes: One, discussing Superintendent Schools' 2017-18 school year evaluation; Two, discussing Superintendent Schools' 2018-19 school year goals; Three, discussing with Superintendent Schools Director of Budget and Finance, and Attorney for Board of Education legal issues pertaining to SEQRA (Secrum) resolutions; Four, discussing with Superintendent Schools informal discussions with Suffolk Educators Association concerning negotiations; Five, discussing with Superintendent Schools and Attorney for Board of Education legal issues pertaining to possible creation of election clerk position; Six, reviewing with Superintendent Schools status of vacancy and position of Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources; Seven, reviewing with Attorney for Board of Education legal issues pertaining to possible issuance of school district cell phones to members of the Board of Education; Eight, reviewing with Superintendent Schools and Attorney for Board of Education legal issues pertaining to non-public school transportation requests; Nine, reviewing with Superintendent Schools staffing issues in the business office. Motion? Mr. McKenzie, second. Mr. Kern, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to call Rehmard Rehmard, the Suffolk Central School District Board of Education meeting of November 20th, 2018. Let the record reflect, all board members are present, in addition to our illustrators who are here, in our Board Clerk, Ms. Ice Holding, Ms. Weber, our great district clerk, Campbell, Mr. Schneer, our attorney, Mr. Frampton, and obviously Dr. Adams. If I could please ask everybody to rise for the flag.
United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual, liberty, and justice for all.
Your favorite part of the meeting, and I'll stand at the fore.
Hi, I'm Maddie Nixwell, I'm a senior at Suffolk High School. Tonight was Chinese night at Suffolk High School, the Chinese Honor Society put on a showing there tonight. We also had our NCAA signing today, where 10 student athletes signed D1, D2, and D3 institutions. The Forensic League Speech Competition will be on November 28th at Suffolk High School, that will be throughout the school day. There is an SAT exam at Suffolk High School on December 1st, and Thanksgiving break begins Thursday.
Thank you, Maddie, and have a happy Thanksgiving. And I just wanted to make sure we're putting... Where's Maddie?
I have it.
Okay, well, how do you spell... I know it's a nickname, but what's the correct spelling of your first name?
Oh, M-A-D-I-E.
One D?
One D.
So I looked in several websites, it's double D's, it's an I, it's an I-E, actually like about six letters, it's an A-D-Y.
I-E, there you go.
Thank you, guys. Next, we have the auditors' report. Do you mind introducing yourself? Can we get the mic? Yes, it's working now, you might want to hold it.
This is Donalee Barrett, she's the managing partner of Barrett and Associates in Suffolk. Donalee's the managing partner, as I said, she's the engagement partner on audit. My name is David Klimmer, I was the engagement partner when the firm used to be more roamed about in the years. Beginning in 2017, sold our practice to Donalee's practice, but I'm still involved in managing and assisting and did a lot of the work, managed a lot of the works, handled most of our discussion. And I just have to say, I'm very gratified that so many people were interested in, you're the bug dog. I have to say that we met, I met with the audit community last night, spent a fair amount of time going into quite a bit of detail, and I'm not going to do that to everybody here, and I won't do it tonight. So if you can indulge us for maybe four or five subjects in one or two minutes, I should be, you know, the main thing I want to say about audit is to thank the Board, Dr. Adams, Teresa, and everyone involved in setting the policies and making sure the policies are followed, because it makes it a lot easier for us, it gives us a high comfort level to see the transparency that we encounter, the openness, no sense of invasion and our questions or anything like that, so we appreciate that, and it's a credit to the district, to the team at the top. There's a couple things I want to talk about. We had some copies of the reports, I know they were in email form. I want to say that the opinions are clean opinions, they're unqualified, which is to say that statements you're looking at are fairly present what happened in the district over the year, and looking at balances that we have here. So it's an opinion on the district as a whole, it's an opinion on fund statements in the district, it's an opinion on the extra classroom activity funds on a cash basis, cashing out. And then there's two other items that are in the report, there are more than two, there's a report on internal control, and if there's any serious of internal control, we would have those listed here, there were no items of that sort. There's a statement, a letter on compliance with laws and regulations. You have to look at laws and regulations, and if they're not being compliant, they're causing problems with compliance. There were none of those in the report. We had a few items in a management letter, which are smaller, lower level things, we'll just comment on, so things don't get out of hand. One was on the opening in the resources department, and some people out, and it created a situation where someone from payroll had to kind of fill in on parts of it. And that's what we consider a segregation duties issue, and that someone from payroll should manipulate something in the resources, because they're charged, they should be paid. A small item, but it's not that much, we'll comment on it if you all can, we'll handle it. And then there were some comments on the extra classroom activity funds, and there usually are, just about documentation, heavy advisors on students, make sure that the fund raised, that they've got records, they're complete and reconciled at every point, those type of items. And the other item in the management letter was about a procedures manual that's required under what's called Uniform Guidance to choose the application of federal funds. You get federal funds, you spend them on different projects, and that requires that there be a separate set of procedures for handling those type of activities. And that's something that needs to be drawn up, but we do have some pro formas from other entities that have done it, and follow it. And the statements, I'm not going to go through the details, we're available at any time, if anyone wants to ask questions or have a little more information on that, but it's all there, like I said, it's a clean opinion, it's successful audit, and we appreciate these systems again. So certainly open any questions now.
Thank you for that, and we're now going to open, as in, another floor for board members to ask questions if you don't mind.
I have one question. All right, I'm just going to yell. Last night during the audit committee meeting, we had gone through the financials, thank you, the audited financials, basically from front cover to back cover. We were told about the MDNA, which is Management Discussion and Analysis. In some municipalities, school districts, it's written by the management, sometimes it's written by the auditing firm. In this case, most of the numbers were done by the auditing firm, but some of the written part of it was done by the administration. So the factors that I was mostly concerned with were factors bearing on the district's future, it's page 13 of the financials. There were three things that were picked up by the administration as concerns to the district. The first one being the certiorari proceedings, and the amount that they had on a budget for future tax payments, and the reserves that they had for it. There was something that came up regarding the certioraries, and that is regarding utility properties, and what the governor is trying to do is trying to limit the amount that the utility properties have to pay in tax. So this would be a major tax issue for our taxpayers in the future. Another thing that they were talking about is the district has experienced significant decline in public school enrollment over the past several years, while non-public school enrollment has increased, and this trend is projected to continue. Additional non-public school enrollment may need to increase costs related to transportation and special education services. The third thing that was very troubling was the building in, which is coming from the government, which would increase taxes again to the homeowner and the business owners in the school district. And that's $2.3 million that wouldn't be coming in to the school district from the state. So basically what that means is, I did the calculations, that alone is a 2% increase to the taxpayers. So that's like having a tax cap on top of the tax cap. So that would be issued to the taxpayers, and it's another burden. So those are coming from administration, correct, and not from the owners? So I just wanted to get that out.
I have a question about this item.
Well, just that they didn't write it, it came from the administration.
That was a district name.
Yeah, that's true.
District reported.
Yes, that's actually all in the name, really, from the district itself, the management. We help out with putting some of the MDA section is just date, so for that, anyways, that board, whether they're adding on this, this may happen in the future, that's certain matters.
Do you have some information of our honest line fund balance, how much we are contributing, or let's say in 1819 for this current budget, how much we contributed to balance our budget?
Oh, as far as what's appropriate.
What is the actual for 1819? Because I asked this question and I don't have it.
It's $3,100,000.
What's the percentage?
Are you sure you're not asking about the unrestricted, undesignated fund balance?
Yeah.
Limited to 4%?
Yeah.
Yeah, that amount is 4%, it is 4%.
It is 4%. Sorry?
$5,500,000.
Sorry, can you clarify?
So the amount of your fund balance is not earmarked for something else. Your working capital to cover any shortfalls is $5,596,000, and that is 4% of the budget.
Okay, thank you for that. And that's been consistent over...
Yes.
So the difference for next year will just be the difference in the budget at 4%?
Do that again.
The $5,000 there from this year, next year to make it 4%, whatever increase in the budget cap, you take 4% back as part of the budget.
And the balance has to be rolled into the...
Every year we make it 4%.
Right.
And then you roll the other portion of it. Right, so the only increase is the 4% of difference from one year to the other.
Do we ever apply fund balances to stay under the cap?
Well, the $3,100,000 as appropriated for the next year's budget, so you're not raising $3.1 million tax, you're using some of your existing fund balance.
And does that eventually use it off, or it's always being renewed?
No, it is a immediately used off, it's again each year.
It's renewable every time.
It doesn't have to be the same amount, you need that gap to cover it. So last year was 2.1, this year is 3.4. 2.1 last year.
For the 17-year year.
Okay, great, thank you, that's my question, is anybody, Mr. Aaron, we are all looped, Mr. Donalee, for your time.
Thank you for your help.
Thank you, if you want to be able to...
Thank you, we appreciate your time. At this time, the Chair would like to entertain a motion for the adoption of minutes of the regular meeting of November 6th, 2018. Mr. McKenzie, you've all raised your voices a little, so Heather and I can call him. Second?
Second.
Mr. Shapiro? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, it is our adopted, thank you very much. Superintendent comments?
I have three outstanding Eagle Scouts, they're excited that the entire faculty's come out to support them.
Good evening, folks. Let me introduce myself, my name is Marcus Siklinsky, I'm a proud Eagle Scout in Trip 21, located in Suffolk, New York. Behind me are my fellow Eagle Scouts.
Michael Simon.
We're going to give you a little in...
It's Josh.
So we're going to give you a...
Can I just yell? So we're going to give you a little insight about what we did for our project. So for my project, I built a couple of planting beds and trellises at the Garden of Hope. For you folks who don't know what the Garden of Hope is, it is a garden behind Good Samaritan Hospital, where people who went through tragedy events, are handicapped, or just work at Good Samaritan Hospital, go to hang out. The garden is wheelchair accessible, so the handicapped patients can plant tomatoes, celery, and all the exotic plants, I don't know if they can live there. So to complement what was already there, I made two planting beds. One is a huge angular L, and the other one is kind of a trapezoidal shape, my math teacher's been very frustrating. And then on top of that, to connect the pre-existing structures of my planting beds, I made four trellises. So just imagine two beams, and then another beam up top, four of them, two feet apart, going down the garden.
Wow.
Thank you. I'm Michael Simon, for my project, I made a World War I Veterans Memorial for the nine veterans from Suffolk. This was important because the previous memorial was destroyed when the New York State thruway came through Suffolk. So my project, I actually have photos, if you guys want to pass them around. You guys are fans of handouts, right? Yeah, my project, as you can see, has a plaque with the names and dates of deaths of the nine local veterans on a boulder, which you can't see, it's on a concrete pad. And behind the boulder, there is a flagpole with a flag, and on either side of the monument, there are flowers and trees that I planted.
So like my friend Marcus said, I'm Joshua Inkley. My project was, I built a greenhouse for Montebello Community Gardens. It was an eight-by-ten greenhouse entirely made of, not entirely, but made of recycled two-liter bottles. Not only was it a service project, but it was a conservation project, which I'm proud of. In total, I had 31 volunteers, the project cost $2,500, and in total, it took 370 man-hours, 180 of which were mine, so.
To continue my comments, all of the Eagle Scouts were the ones who spoke during that part. As Maddie mentioned earlier today, there was a signing of letters of intent NCAA, we had a number of kids that were recognized, and I think there's at least one, at least one in here right now, maybe more. Now, of course, I think half the kids that signed letters today were on the baseball team, so Coach Mitchie is expecting a section championship this year. And then the other event I had an opportunity, and it was the same pleasure to witness, was yesterday, and Paul Shapiro was able to attend it as well, was the Cambridge class. And there were three of the kids did presentations, and they were, the presentations themselves were amazing, just the proposal that the kids had, and the way they expressed themselves, but their content knowledge was exceptional. And these aren't easy projects, you know, a lot of them are difficult just to pronounce. And then when the class was over, Mr. Kaplan had the kids go around the room and tell us what projects that they were going to present on, or had presented on. And I think the Board and the faculty, all of us, should be extraordinarily proud of our kids and what they exhibited in the Cambridge class. And really, it's a testament to all of you K-12, and what you did to help out there.
And for my fellow board members who have not had a chance yet to visit the Cambridge class, you all have a calendar on your email, I strongly recommend that you try to make at least one of these dates. I've had the pleasure of attending some of Mr. Kaplan's classes, and topics are extremely cutting-edge, controversial, and just listening to our students debate very, very important topics, that there's no black or white, and no right or wrong, and they're important topics in the media, they're important health-related topics, so I'm going to be making at least one or two of those dates, and encourage all my colleagues to do the same. It's a very exciting class, and thanks for Mr. Kaplan, always hard work with the Cambridge class. At this time, I'd like to open the first segment of public participation. This is on agenda items only, and first of two segments. Each period will not exceed 30 minutes. Miss Campbell will be the time keeper, and each speaker is allowed up to three minutes. We cannot discuss specific concerns regarding individuals, personnel, or students, and all comments should be of that nature, should be addressed to the Superintendent of Schools during business hours. Remarks should be addressed to the Board President, and please address to the microphones, take your name and your affiliation with the district before speaking. Thank you.
Good evening, my name is Travis Jackson, I'm a school counselor at Suffolk Middle. My father started working for the district in 1959. My sister, Sue Galene, was hired in 1994, and I began the district in 2002, after serving the children of East Rambo for a decade. Maddie, we've known each other for a long time, and I want to thank you personally for putting the teachers agreement on the agenda tonight, consideration by the Board. You've made transparency an important goal of your administration. Considering this agreement in public and putting it to a vote goes a long way to achieving that goal. It is so important to hear where our elected officials stand on important issues. Thank you.
Well, I have to say this evening, I'm not having an out-of-body experience of the way it's talking. I was not expecting to speak.
Would you kindly, we know who you are, but would you be so kind to introduce yourself?
Yes, my name is Feneta Miles, and I'm the president of the Rambo. Well, we haven't changed Ram, because we like Ram tough. I know some of our members want to go Suffolk Central, and we've got a tally going right now, and Ram is still in the lead. So we'll see how it goes. But it took us a long way to get here, and we like the Ram. So that's what we are right now, so I'm president of Ram, teacher aides, and lunchboxers. And I'd just like to say, good evening. I'm happy to be standing before you again, pleased and grateful to the Board for you, Maddie, for supporting our contract, and hopeful that our experience getting there has been a valuable lesson learned. Contract negotiations are important and valuable. They have been a longstanding process between the district and its employees throughout every administration and Board of Ed. Representatives from both sides are entrusted with the responsibility to negotiate for thoughtfulness and concern for both the district and its employees. It is a trusted and respected process that has never been used as a means to an end. It is a trusted and respected process that has never been used as a means to an end or a way to pursue compliance on some unrelated matter. Rather, it has always been a good-faith negotiation between employee and employer. And this is the reason that, once presented to the board, there has always been a yes vote to ratify such agreements. We're all here tonight to honor this process as it should be. It is the right thing to do, it is the right time to do it. After all, it's Thanksgiving. So let's thank our teachers, our clinicians, our librarians, our teaching assistants, and all the members who come under the umbrella of SBA. They deserve it, they earn it, they work hard, and believe me, I've worked with a lot of them here at various schools, and I know how valuable they are and what they mean to this district. And no budget should prevent them from seeking what they deserve, what they've worked for for their families. So let his thanks to them, and have a happy Thanksgiving.
I'm a parent in the district. I have two children in Suffolk Middle School, and I have to agree that the teachers deserve anything and everything we can give them. I am a huge supporter of our teachers, I'm a huge supporter of the PTA. I have always gone over and about to do anything I can to make the teachers more comfortable and give them anything that they need to help them help our students. It's not a matter of whether they deserve this raise, it's a matter of whether we can afford this raise, okay? And I'm not going to say that we can't until we actually vet what's going on. I see the numbers that are being asked for, but I don't see any way that we're going to pay for it. Has anyone seen a projection rushed over four years over what this increase is going to mean and how we're going to pay for it? If it comes down to, and we give you this raise, which you definitely deserve, and we have to bust the tax cap, where to pay for it? Is that really going to happen? Are we going to close a school to make that happen? And if we do that, is that good for the teachers? No, that's not good for the teachers. A big percentage of you are going to have to be downsized. So I would ask the board not to vote yes on this contract tonight until you actually have some real details that you can share with the public. I would like to know how we're going to pay for this, how much it's going to cost. Do these numbers simply reflect a salary increase, or do they also reflect the budget increase that's going to come along with pension contributions, tax rule, other taxes, benefits, et cetera? Again, I am a huge supporter of the teachers. I would give you anything and everything that I could possibly give you, but it's not going to do us any good if we pay you all this money and then have to close a school and downsize the district. Let's just see. If we can, if we can afford this, President, President of the board, if we can afford this, by all means, I support it 100%. But I want to see that we can support it without then compromising our teachers in the future by closing a school and actually having to downsize. Secondly, I want to make a couple of points that I think are important. One is, I think it's important to recognize that four of the seven board members here have family members that are directly benefiting from this contract. Not that they shouldn't, and I'm never going to ask them to recuse themselves because then we have three of seven board members making the decision for the entire district. That doesn't make sense to me either. The other thing I want to say is, once again, here we come with the agenda and not having enough time to prepare. I would like to have had this information to actually vet it. I've looked at other districts, the numbers that you're asking for in this memorandum are not in line with what's happening in other districts in our neighboring districts. And I don't know why. But I do want to say that I checked online for the agenda for this meeting, as it was supposed to be voted on Thursday night, it was supposed to be posted, and it was not there. I checked again Friday morning, four o'clock, and it was still not posted. I checked about 2:00 p.m., and it was not posted. When I sat down to review the agenda along with the supporting documents, I noticed that there was, there suddenly an added, an added, and later on, you get my point. Please just get your information. Thank you.
Rebuttal. Rebuttal, somebody, please. Pensions are due, come from New York State retirement system, not from the district.
I'm sorry?
Pensions are from the New York State retirement system, not the district.
Order, please, and the next person needs to go to the mic, please. Thank you.
Get your information correct.
Thank you. You just have to give opportunities to do.
Yeah, no, I understand.
Anybody who agrees with you can get up.
How are you doing, guys? Joseph Ramon, you have to give to the district, one of the elementary schools, and the one in Georgia. Yeah, really quick. This contract, I'm not sure if you can tell, I haven't seen it yet, but if a teacher wants a raise, give it to them. It's that simple. It's that simple, okay? And as far as paying for it, I want to remind this board that your predecessors turned money down for the fact I was giving you. I was giving you $100, you said no. The next time, if someone comes to this board and gives you money, don't turn it down, okay? It's that simple. It's for a feel of that. The board said, we all want the money. We have too much money, we're rich. So if you guys are rich, they can just have their raise. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any additional comments? We still have time, 1:00, and now's your opportunity. Can you bring someone at the door, ask if anyone outside would like to come? Thank you. Just waiting to hear from everyone else. There are none. Thank you. At this time, I conclude the first segment of public participation, and then move on to action items. We have action items 2.01, up to 2.14, I think you have that. And this is the time when board members can pull any items for discussion. Hey, Ms. Reimer, 2.08.
2.09.
No, but we're gonna, there's still our question, I'll take it. All right, any items? Mr. McKenzie, any items? Okay. Mr. Khan? Do you got Mr. Shapiro? Mr. Donnelly? Okay. All those? 2.05, 2.06, 2.07. Being pulled for discussion. Discussion will occur after a consent agenda on the remaining items. The remaining items, just to clarify, that are being voted on as a consent agenda are Did I get everything? And now, the chair would like to entertain a motion for consent agenda on those items. Please state it. Motion. Ms. Reimer, second. Mr. McKenzie, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstains? Those items have been moved. We will go in order on remaining items. We may be able to group them if there are similar questions. So I will start with the items I pulled. 2.05, 2.06, and 2.07. It's okay with board members, the questions are the same on all three. We'd like a motion on the table to start a discussion. Anyone?
No.
Okay, we have a first and a second, Mr. Kern and Mr. Shapiro. And discussion. Anyone before me? So we, I had a question that was emailed regarding those three items, and Mr. Pachara's here to help us with the response. If you don't see him, see a blue. The sea of blue, I didn't intend upon, but it's perfect. It's not to the mind.
Sure, I'll log into this, okay? What the board is approving or being asked to approve here is that these three projects are not environmentally tight, want projects. They do not cause any need for environmental impact statement, and it will just allow us to continue to move forward with designing plans and specs for the state education department to review on these projects. So there are two things that still have to occur. The voters will have to approve funding for these projects, probably at the main budget time. So we are looking to, right now, just get seekers, they're known as state environmental quality reviews, for New Transformer, Spolstra Elementary School, New Track, and Summer Fairs at the middle school to be facing, and then also a new gym roof at the high school, none of which reach the level of environmental impact, so the architect and district council.
They call title, title two?
Title, yeah, title two actions, there's what they're concerned is not, they do not have an environmental negative environment.
And we asked a little bit about the projected cost of these projects, although today, we are not voting on the cost of these projects, we're voting on actually submitting applications to state that with the environmental release.
Right. Our best estimate at this point is that these three projects, three buildings, which have four unique purposes, will be about $1.7 million of total work that will have to be done.
$1.7 million. Mr. Pachara explained that we have allocated some of these funds as part of the current budget. The rest of the cost would have to be a proposition.
Yeah, so it would have to be submitted, approved by the voters, probably in our May vote.
So about a million dollars.
Yeah, and the capital reserve that was funded by the, approved to be funded by the voters, now $10 million would be where the majority of these funds are.
Roughly around $1 million, if I'm doing that correctly. Because we put $700,000 in the budget.
Your tradition would put $700,000 in the regular school budget, and then the remainder would go to the capital reserve.
Thank you very much. Cool, thank you. Okay, at this time, I'd like to ask all those in favor to signify on items 2.05, 2.06, and 2.07. If nobody has an issue with voting on together, I might, no issue, then we are both signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstains? 2.08. Any discussion? Actually, let me start the motion, I apologize. Do you want to do eight and nine together? Together, so 2.08 and 2.09, we need a motion on the floor. Ms. Reimer, second, Mr. Shapiro, thank you. And that will be for both, 2.08 and 2.09. Okay, any discussion?
I just wanted to make sure with Teresa that nothing was out of the ordinary. Nothing out of my mind. Sorry, everybody.
Nothing was out of the ordinary, everything was.
Nothing was.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah. Oh. Okay, at this time, all those in favor, 2.08 and 2.0, I'm sorry, 2.09 and 2.08, yes? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those against? Any abstains? 2.08 and 2.09 have passed, thank you. I apologize. 2.12. Need a motion for 2.12, uncollected taxes. Mr. Kern's, second. Mr. McKenzie, discussion.
I just had a quick question. Sorry. This year, it, most of the uncollected taxes are due to state lands.
Correct.
So most of it, it's so short, and then Matt had asked a question, and basically, they said it was more timing because the state lands usually pay in March.
Right, that's, it's not a, all of Havestor is state land, and I think it was about $3 million of Ramapo is state land, and the rest are people that haven't paid as of November 15th, when I'm sure you know the town comes in, brings us every dollar that they have, and then the county makes us totally whole, whether, you know, people pay or not, they make us whole people first.
Okay, now, do they also make us whole just in case we don't collect the state lands?
That's never happened.
Okay, good. I would be delighted.
Can you explain that question?
Well, state lands is actually coming from the state, so sometimes the state shorts people on things that they're supposed to be paying, especially when you know that you're supposed to get your tax check back at the end of the year, April 15th, and the state has been very slow to pay, or sometimes sends you a letter saying that, you know, we're going to ask you questions because you want too much back from us. So the state is having a hard time financially, and they were paying less than what they were supposed to be paying. So I just wanted to make sure that they're tax burdened, they're not shorting.
So any funds that we're short and this uncollected tax is compensated through the county?
Yes, and if, they'll be paid from November to April, but they will, and now you're paying a big penalty if you paid your tax, if you didn't pay your taxes. So they will make us whole on April 1st, or 5/4, sometimes a little late, but you know, within a week or so, of every dawn, they, they take out, like some, this might be too technical, but say, we have a tax search that a company never paid us, they'll take that off what they owe us because they made that payment, we don't make that payment. So that's how that works, but yeah, we are, we're all paying $100,000.
And those numbers are typical?
Yeah, those are pretty typical.
Prior year today. All right, and Matt, you were good, you received that response, if you could share the response. We have it, it was today.
Okay, thank you. I told you I'm staying up here.
Thank you, Teresa, well, thank you.
Yes. Mr. McKenzie?
So you said that nearly all of the stuff is state land that we're collecting taxes from?
All of Havestor and about $3 million of the town Ramapo. The rest are taxpayers, businesses, people that have not paid their taxes on time. businesses, people that have not paid their taxes on the.
Okay, acting on 2.12, uncollected taxes, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstains? Any names? None, thank you. 2.14. 2.14 is memorandum of, memorandum of agreement on the Suffolk Education Association. Motion?
So moved.
Mr. Shapiro? Second?
Second.
Mr. Kern? Discussion?
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
When I was elected, before I was sworn in, I went to the business office to learn about the budget, to learn about how they do the budgeting, the financial statements. Basically, they printed me out, PPT, Excel worksheets. And basically, we were talking about the budget, and I was told that the budget going forward is not sustainable, that we will have to close a building between three and five years. I went back to my running mates at the time, and we vowed that we would do everything in our power to ensure that the school district succeeds with no building closures. If buildings ever closed, that would be detrimental to your union, and I will not go for that. I love all of our schools. We were hoping that we were going to get revenues in from Tuxedo, from closing their high school. They just voted to not close it down, and so we're not getting that revenue in, which happens. I don't want to see our high school close, and we send our children to Tuxedo. So. I don't have to be laughing at it, but if you're going to talk about closing a building,
Let me do the jokes.
I just want you to know that I appreciate everything our teachers do. And if I could, I would go for it, but looking at the numbers and the 2.3 that we're going to have to kick in for the taxpayers for just, for just the, the building aid, and then another 2.3, not to mention what's going to be owed for their retirement system coming from the school district, and the taxes, and everything else that goes with it. It's just not feasible.
Mr. Kern, any comments?
I will start by saying that the road to get where we are tonight was muddy, and I think we can all acknowledge that, and I'm probably not going to be the only one here to, to say that. However, the numbers that are represented in the MOA, I'm comfortable with. I believe that it's fair, and I'm in favor of.
Mr. McKenzie?
I agree with Matt in how he said that the road here was very muddy. I think that the form, rather than the content, is what I have an issue with. I feel as though the process was violated. I feel as though there was a motive behind it, and I feel as though we were misrepresented to a degree. I am in favor, I, I like the numbers, I think that the numbers are fair, but I think that we haven't been given the proper information until yesterday of what exactly the numbers are, and the projection of the long term for those numbers. So do I think that we can do this? Yes. Are we ready to do it now? I don't think we really are.
Okay, so what we're going to do is we're going to go around, and if anybody has specific budget questions, we're going to do the round two that. Mr. Donnelly?
Well, first of all, I'd like to say that I, I'm in a unique position, that I've been in the building with you people for 17 years, it was a great experience. And I can honestly say that I know what you do every day, I've been in your classrooms, I've been in your, your gymnasiums, I've been in your libraries, I know what you do, and I appreciate it, and I am prepared to vote and vote, excuse me, and vote positive for this contract. You deserve it. It's fair notice, and this community can, can, can take the, the expense on. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you. Mr. Shapiro?
Yes. It's also a number, that's a S V T word. So I'm sad where a lot of you are sitting, that exactly what you're saying. As a former teacher, a former building administrator, these are interesting times. It's a great turnout. I know what the teachers do. I've been very fortunate, I'm going to change the word fortunate, I've been very honored to work with Tommy at Suffolk High. Don and I have discussed this, we should have billboards, not the three billboards in, I can't use this, not the three billboards in whatever movie that was. But one that says, if you want to know what a good, if you want to know what a great high school is like, come and visit Suffolk High. If you want to know what a great middle school is, go see Suffolk Middle, Middle School. You can go from Cherry Land, RP Connor, you can go to Viola, you can, you can go to Montebello, you can go to Slutberg, you can go to any one of those five schools and see how the administrators work with the teachers, and how the teachers work with each other. That just doesn't happen. That's created here. The atmosphere in this district is, is one of, like, just greatness. The former district that I worked, worked in, which Don and I actually both, both did, was great at one time. Probably was great before a lot of you were born. I don't want to go, go there, but in order for us to be great, we have to show the appreciation for the staff, all staff. Doesn't matter what your position is, you're all part of this family, and that's what we are, we are a family. The Board of Education is part of your family, we are with you. And I know there are questions about money, you know, can we sustain it? You know, Melissa brings up a very good point, you know, are we, are we just seeing this, or are we looking three years ahead? Are we looking five years ahead? Are we looking 10 years ahead? For some of you, you're going to be gone, you know, you're going to retire. I might be, but you're going to be gone.
Must be in Delaware.
Right, right. But we also have to know what is fair, and what's important, and, and in, in my thinking, this was like a, this was like a perfect storm, this is like a good atmosphere, this is good atmosphere between, and I'm going to be dead honest here, between the association, the superintendent, parents, students, it's all good, it's all up. We should, we should grab this. This is that brass ring that you don't always even get to see, but it's there now, and, and we should grab it. I, I tend to get a little bit emotional, but that's, that's me. Whether, whether, whether we vote on it now, or if we wait two weeks and we vote on it later, well, if we're going to vote on it, and, and if we're going to pass it, we should pass it, because it's the right thing to do. I've had the honor to work with a lot of great, great people in this district, some principals who are here tonight, I've worked with, with you, I've worked in place of one, one of you for a very short, short time. Really, the district is great, and it's because of the teachers. So when it comes to voting, I guess I don't have to say what I'm doing, I think you got the hit. But I think it's time for us to step up. And sometimes we may have to tighten our belt along the way, or maybe there'll be a windfall, and when the windfall comes, we'll be there to catch it. So, that's it.
I don't know if.
Mr. Kern's?
All right, I don't know if any of you have seen the film Groundhog Day, or it became a play on Broadway, okay, but if you've seen it, basically it's the same thing over and over again. And if you remember about a couple of months ago, we were here, and the board was presented with a contract, and at that time, basically, we voted the contract down. The reason was, we weren't really against the contract at all, the question was, what's in the contract, okay? That was the problem. And eventually, we had a meeting afterward, we figured out, we, we got information exactly how many people that contract was for, and how much the contract financially was going to cost the district each year for the four-year contract. That night when we were presented with it, okay, we did not have that information, even though the information was requested, okay? And that's the problem, okay? Unfortunately, you know, we, tonight at 10:07, we were presented with numbers, okay? That is not significant, or enough time, okay, really to analyze and say, because I think the contract is fair. Obviously, the thing that makes Suffolk strong in terms of education, it's not the administration, no offense, but it's the teachers, okay? And you do great things. But one of the things we have to do is go by process. Unfortunately, okay, we asked the question about, should this be on the agenda tonight or not, okay? The idea was, what we asked for was information, let's see what those numbers are going to cost us in the first, second, third, and fourth year, okay? By the advice of our attorney, okay, he basically told us it should not be on the agenda, okay? For some reason, I have no idea why it is on the agenda at that point, but we would certainly want to entertain exactly when we go back and we have a chance to discuss the numbers and the impact, okay? That obviously would determine whether or not to pass it. At this point, okay, I don't think I can say a yes vote, but you know, given the numbers, get the background before it, and if it is feasible, certainly you would have my vote at that point, but tonight, that is not possible as it was two months ago, when the other contract was given to us without, again, any numbers behind it, okay? We have, the Board of Education, you do share a responsibility to do diligence, okay? And you have to know exactly what you're going to be spending, okay? And unfortunately, this is not how it has been at this contract, with a contract before.
Thank you for your comments. I would like to turn this into any specific questions regarding the information that was provided late yesterday evening, since we haven't had a chance to really discuss this information. Now would be an opportunity for us to, to ask any questions that we may have that have to do with the financing of the proposition. As far as the activation of the item, Mr. Jackson, thank you for your comments. I will have to divulge that I didn't, was not given the opportunity to, to actually put this or not put it, neither, on today's agenda. It, you know, it was put after our, our agenda was activated. So I can't claim with credit, and I didn't want you to give me credit, let's not do. I can't take credit for, for the fact that it's on tonight's agenda. In the meantime, there's one proposition that is, is attached to today's agenda, and this is my first.
Excuse me, Amarni.
I'm sorry.
May I interrupt?
No, I, I'd like to ask my question.
I would like Dr. Adams to, I mean, there's been a lot of allegations here that things were thrown into this. I would like Dr. Adams just to maybe.
Of course.
Have his say and inform what has really gone on here.
I mean.
Thank you.
Yeah, sure. But my question, I was starting to ask on the report that was sent last night, since the, you know, we got four, we got one report today and three last night, that have to do with questions requested October 16th, and then the balance on November 17th. My question is specific to, and whoever Dr. Adams chooses to respond is specific to one of the reports provided last night. I have the breakdown of the numbers that are on the agenda today. And my question, I need clarification of this chart a little bit, a little bit of explanation, so I'm not reading it incorrectly. So Teresa, I believe you, you can. Who, who's able to answer? Sorry.
Anthony's still here, I can't believe he's.
Mr. Kishara, around?
Which contract do you want? We have four.
No, the one on the table today is your number three. So we numbered them earlier today, because that was the first time, and then print number three is what we're discussing. And basically, we have several columns on this. Last night is the first time again that we're seeing this document. And I really want to be scientific about this, for those who know me, you know, that's the only way I can address any issue on the table, is to really understand what we're approving or disapproving, or what we would like more information on, and what we have enough information on. That's just how I operate. Mr. Kishara, aye. So on, on this proposition that's on the MOA that was placed on tonight's agenda, if you can explain the columns on that front page.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, so what we, this is based on a four-year agreement on the existing salary grid of the 1.6, 1.8, 2.2, and 2.4 percent increases. And the way it normally works is, the BA, BA1 staff goes up by that amount, and then the index computes the numbers throughout. We then, TRS and Social Security are directly impacted by how much money a person makes. TRS changes each year, based on our best estimates, we're saying 16% in addition to that is for the benefits that are directly related to salary. FICUS is 7.65, TRS changes, but we're looking at a rate between nine and 10 on that. So the total cost, including the benefits, in year one is about $1.8 million, $1.817.
Where's that figure?
Including benefits.
Okay, that one.
Yep, so that's really, that's the column.
The column before the last.
Yeah, the last column just showed compared to a 2% tax cap. We obviously, the tax cap each year, the renacular is it's 2%, but it does change, but for purposes of what, you know, if we try to, the goal was stay within the tax cap each year, that gives us anywhere from $2.2 to $2.3 million each year that we can spend. So this contract would absorb 1.8 of that 2.2 in this first year. Now, obviously, there's a whole lot of other things, we're hearing maybe TRS is going to be a little less just next year, we have to get our final health insurance numbers. So the other parts of the budget are normally what we worked on in February, March, and presented to the voters in May, but right now, this would encumber approximately, you know, 1.8 of that 2.2 spending authority. And then each year, we again show you, each year it's less than the 2% as far as the tax cap, but it's, you know, it absorbs somewhere around 75 to 80% depending on the year of it, but that, obviously, teachers' professional salaries are our largest expenditure also. So that's what we were, that's what this chart shows you, there's all backup behind it. This does not take into account, just so you know, just to be transparent, if teachers achieve more credits and move colleagues, that's above the annual retirement. Then obviously, more senior teacher leaves, new person comes on, that would be, you know, more revenue for us to help. That would be, you know, more revenue for us to help figure this. So, that's, and, so those are really the economic portions of this agreement.
Okay. A couple of questions related to that. I see that we get very close to the cap on years three and four, and those would be just looking from a spectator seat, the more concerning years, where we've gotten extremely close to the cap on those two years.
Those are the higher percentages, yeah, 2.2 and 2.4.
And now, we're at what percentage of the cap at those in year three and four?
1.9 compared to 2.3, so that's, yeah, somewhere around that 85 percent. I would have to just do a quick calculation. It's 1,900 of 2.3 approximately. And it's not surprising, the last two years, those are the higher percentages, 2.2 and 2.4.
Yes.
Are in year three and four.
Right.
Again, part of the whole, is that maybe the retirements, in the meantime, will help a little bit to absorb some of that, but...
Right. And we also don't know what TRS is. We don't, there's so many factors...
Unpredictable.
That we don't know, but it has been going down. We've had savings in TRS over the last few years as well. I mean, significant savings over a couple of years.
And there was, there was an expectation that the retirement will go up at some point, that you reported recently, that the trend where it dropped is not...
We don't know, but right now, it's going down. It's going down again this year.
We did receive a note from the teacher retirement system. This year, it's approximately 10.6 percent we had to budget. Next year, they gave us our age at 8.5 to 9.5 percent.
Okay.
But, again, fluctuations have been huge. It's been from as low as 1 percent to as high as 16 percent. So, you know, over these three years, it will not be flat. We know that much. The general economy, performance of their investment funds, they're all, they use a five-year trend, all those things, so... Everything, including stuff in the current event, so...
Is that column including the Social Security impact?
Yes.
So, that way includes the benefits and...
Yeah. We're assuming 16 percent compared to, again, TRS, we're around 10, 9 to 10, 7.65 is Social Security. Social Security is not on all earnings, but, you know, that's why we're saying 16 percent is what we're factoring for benefit, that we would have to, that we'd like to...
And so, how far, I know Matt has been a big encourager of projected budgets and presentations about that. How far is your projection ready to discuss? And can we please have the pie chart of what our projections are for the duration of this contract, which is four years? I have asked for that October 16th and November 6th, and I, until this minute, don't have it. I don't have the rest of the pie expectations, because we're signing up on four years. We should at least have projections for four years.
Yeah. And we will, right, the assumptions will be crucial, what we expect for increased state aid. That is not a product I have to hand you right now.
Right now.
Here's the next three or four years picture. The general financial situation in the district is positive, and that's what...
We want to keep it that way.
Lends us to feel that, you know, imitate with things, this is attainable for us.
Remember, this is our biggest expense.
Yes.
This is by before, our biggest expense.
Right. But also, we need to make sure that we have salaries for all other groups that we have to pay, and we can maintain our buildings, and can do renovations that are needed, and can continue to keep our programs that we're very proud of and market, that our teachers are proud of equally, and that we do not close the building, and never have to dig deep into reserves that cannot be touched to balance the budget. And we never want to go over the tax cap, because that's a difficult thing to do in a community.
Yeah. We have been, in the last few budget years, we have not had to rely on any reserves for our operating budget.
So, would you be honored to provide the rest of the budget for our four-year projections, please, because I've asked for that for a month now?
Yeah. And I will, yes. That can be done, obviously, it's not here right this moment, but it's gonna be based on assumptions.
Yes.
And I promise you, it's not gonna, those assumptions...
They're never 100 percent.
It means, we don't know what four years from now state aid is gonna grow. We can trend certain things. We know what our contentiveness is. I mean, some things are hard to fix. We have a good idea of our building aid, and obviously, there is a drop in plan for, you know, a number of years that that was coming. We have some, we have funds set aside to help with that for this year, but, you know, I cannot right now hand you a four-year financial plan.
Thank you.
Incorporate this.
You're not aware that I've requested that, so I, please, I need to, to see that.
Anthony, how much can the district use in terms of its fund balance to help pay for an increase in the teacher contract?
It's a revenue that's at the board's discretion, obviously. And we, we have a high degree of reserves and set sides right now. So, as those are drawn down, we would, irrespective of this teacher contract, whatever we were dealing with, we would be judicious in how we used it. We do feel we can free up some of that for purposes over the next few years. We actually approached that even back in May. We kind of said, we don't expect, for instance, tax certs to continue to be, able to be funded 100 percent. We've been very fortunate. We're unique in the ability to do that. So, we have set aside for those, again, a very high level, probably way more than we'll need. But, again, just want to release a little bit, want to be prudent. We want to have a plan, because, you know, it is one shot that you're using. But we are very fortunate. We have a very strong balance sheet, and that will see us through a number of things, including this contract.
Will we accrue a number in terms of taking out that amount of money, just that period, as the business person?
We're, nothing is just in a, on its own. So, interest income is going up for us. That's a revenue that probably we have some good news on. You know, we're all noticing, it used to be CDs, nobody even thought about them. You know, all of a sudden, you know, bankers are starting to provide us with real interest income. You know, we have 110 million in taxes. If we can get up to a 3 percent CD, that's interest, you know, we were in less than 150 to 200,000. That potentially is a new revenue source. So, that would be a more sustainable. Again, whether it's a half a million a year that we would take out of reserves to help balance the general budget, that obviously is available. We've done, we've done zero dollars over the last six, 10 years. Really, we have not used fund balance to support the budget. So, now we can, we do believe we're gonna have it, irrespective of disagreement.
When? Starting when?
Well, again, the drop in building aid was coming in 1920, so we expected, and we did talk back in May, that we're gonna have to relook at how we reserve for, our biggest thing is taxes. Approximately $20 million for taxes. We're gonna have to release that. And we have to, we have to, obviously, these are real things. These are, we're in court fighting these issues. They're not gonna go away. We will have to make payments. We're very, at a high level of reserve, so maybe we can tone that down. But I, again, we're not going to recommend, you know, reserves to solve the problem of whether it's this, the contract, whether it's facility needs. It's gonna have to be, you know, very prudently turn that spigot on with the understanding that it's a one-shot revenue.
And this rev, this reserve, this loss of building aid, this is something we've been talking about for about five years. We've planned for this. It's not like, oh, we're gonna lose 2.3, and we don't know that we have to do that. We have a debt service reserve that could be used for payment of this building debt service, because we knew this was going to happen. So, it's not, the 2.3 is not something that's unforeseen. We've been looking at it a long time.
Right.
And that's why some, that's why we tried to look at our budget, look at our reserves, because we knew this cliff was going to happen, without raising taxes to, for that, that we have a reserve difference.
Thank you. So, my question to piggyback on what you just mentioned. We have two additional contracts that will, from very soon, in fact, expire, similar to the C contract in June of 2019. Then we have two other contracts. Have you done projections as to how to accommodate all our employees in these contracts and balance the budget without going into, without, obviously, fixing the tax cap, without having to go into reserves that we're not supposed to go with?
We project about 2 and 1/4 percent on salaries across all groups, so that is what we would continue to project for the groups that we're not here to...
Projected 2 and 1/4 plus steps?
Some, some groups don't have steps.
Oh, pretty old.
Some, some do. So, a total salary patch.
Okay.
Yep.
And of course, those salaries are much, this is the biggest salary, but you're looking much smaller.
The highest paid salary.
And that's not the benefit. By the way, when you look at that benefits column, that's a 4 percent.
Right.
16 percent, you know, so, just to, so it's comparable.
Do you, Patrick, I'm sorry, somebody else?
I was gonna say, years three and four seem to be the ones that are the biggest concern. So, they're the times when we're the closest to the 2 percent tax cap. So, if we get, if, if we're in those two years, and we can't balance our district budget, do we have a plan? Just gonna see what happens. Let's hear it.
We will have to reduce expenses, find other revenues, whether it's interest income, whether it's reserves. Again, if the, if your estimate's right now for the, what is the four-year plan that completely absorbs this, and assumption of other economic variables, we can rely on, I can't handle it either now. The biggest thing, the biggest hope would be that there are some separation costs, that we, you know, every year we get six to 10 retirements. That's not factor here. You know, that could be, depending on who the replacements are, that could help buffer those, those years three and four, so...
Well, also, gonna add new hires, and my understanding, from what was shared, is that new hires, there's a higher demand in the district for, you know, and...
Yeah, they're not gonna give in a step one, right? Those slots are...
Yeah, that we're not hiring at these lower steps.
No, they're not. So, that's, yeah, we're not gonna get the normal, you know, difference between top salaries, step one, not gonna be those old, that'll also...
But we don't want to exceed the capacity of the budget at the expense of having to cut any programs, you know, as you say.
We feel that for our facilities needs, we've done a good cover, prepared.
Right.
It's not like there's a big bond issue that's coming.
Right.
So, that, that's not it. You know, we obviously are not, our student enrollment's not growing, so we don't see a growth in staff. You know, if anything, we'll see a slight reduction in staff, just as normal attritions. Do we need to replace positions? I'm not talking anything random about doing these. You know, we, our teaching staff slightly decreases each year unless we have growth. So, between that, separation, interest income has never been this low, so if we get back to our normal interest income, that'll be nice little revenue for us. But in the next breath, you know, we've had a few years of state aid increases. I'm not gonna predict for the next four years that state aid will continue to go up, or it's not gonna have a recession.
We can't predict.
We can't predict. That's why I'm saying, whatever projection you give, is only as good as the assumption.
That's why the total, the total budget projection is really important piece of information, and that we're still...
We had a little looking forward in May, and we did at that point say there are some issues regarding our, to us to look at, you know, across the four years.
Thank you.
So, again, just to reiterate, so you're saying, basically, without really damaging our fund balance, you could actually take out $200,000 and apply it. My other question would be to our attorney, and that would be, the question is the third and the fourth year. Okay? That's basically, you know, the heaviest of them. If a contract is signed, okay, and the economy does, you know, not perform as well, okay? Can, what's the procedure for reopening a contract to, you know, again, at both sides? Because it's in the interest of both the teachers and the...
Mr. Kishara, if I may interject, we will not be able to get a legal opinion publicly, and it is important for your decision-making. We can, convenient executive to ask you legal questions, because we can't get that legal response, just to let you know for that. So, you'll, you'll let us know if, you know, we need to do that, and then we'll all get you up.
Can't get an opinion? Okay.
No, not publicly. Due to attorney outside of legal. Mr. Shabiro?
Yes. I know that I guess was concerned about the money in years three, three and four, the difference between the third column and the last column. For year one is about $390,000. The difference in year three is about $351,000. So, it's only a difference of $39,000. Not a huge amount of money. And the difference in year four between the two columns is, and, I'm sorry, and compare it to year one, it's only a difference of about $26,000, closer to $25,000. All right. I'm not a major, but I can do...
Number one and four, the difference is...
Okay, yeah. All right. This is, these are figures, okay? The difference between column three and four in year one is $390,210. I'm sorry, 21.
390, 21.
Right. 390, 21. Difference in the second year is 472, 177. So, you can invest more money. In year three, the difference between the two is $350,687. So, let's say it's close to $351,000. Compared to the $390,000 in year one, it's only a difference of $39,000.
Between the year and the prior year, that's what you're doing.
I'm not, the prior year, the first, first year.
The first one is drawing.
All right. So, if we thought the first year was good, the third year, well, it's not as good. It's not awful. It's far from awful. And then, when you go to the fourth year, it's $364,952. Let's call it 365, compared to the 390 in the first year. So, it's a difference of about $25,000. So, what I'm trying to show you is that, yeah, three and four are less than year one, but not significantly. We're talking about, I don't know, a cup of coffee, two times a lay from Starbucks, times that time here.
Say that loudly.
Starbucks, coffee, I'm sorry, we should have brought it here.
Creamer, go ahead.
I do have a question. Looking at the African tax bill, it shows the taxes that need to be collected, but it is not. Can you guys read that?
Oh, yeah.
It was $110 billion, basically, for a tax collection. So, we're talking even year one, $389,000 on $110 billion. Goes very fast. If there's anything that changes within that budget, you've now blown your $389. Looking at it for tax caps to, to what the salary is with the benefit, is not a true picture. You have to look at the whole picture.
Mr. Kishara, have you, how is the dropping enrollment age boost, and how we're balancing that? Is there...
There's no change in FTEs here. If there were FTE changes, you'd have less enrollment.
Is there a projection of any cuts due to dropping enrollments? We'd like to really know. It's very, it's important, if that's not...
Right now, we're not able to. Yeah, it's not this time.
One second. So, we don't have a projection even for 1920, some kinds of staff? Based on enrollment trends, are there projections?
No. There's no projection. It's not that there's no cuts or no not cuts, there's no projection.
And also, like you said, the movement in columns is not in these numbers.
No, they don't.
All our teachers are, aren't, you know, able to acquire additional credits and those from college.
We have a lot, I mean, our, when you look at the scatter, our heaviest areas, that makes 60, so, obviously, they've already moved all the way over, so it would be the other color.
Okay. In the current MOA that's, that was attached to this agenda and shared on a couple of days before the meeting, there are figures of $1,000 promised to those who cannot overstep. Can you fill us in on that? Because that has never been discussed. Can you fill us in on that, because that has never been discussed before?
Well, that's for, I'm saying that's for two years, the first two years of the year. Right now, we had a $500 amount, now for four years, so gross total, that's $2,000 for contracts. I didn't factor it in either base, it does not have longevity factor, nor do the projections, but over the life of the contract, it is more important. Longevity is the same over that period, $2,000. Last contract was $400, $500.
That's what I saw, it was $500 for each of the years.
Yeah, this is now two payments of $1,000.
Is there a reason it was done that way as opposed to the last configuration? Is it, I'm sorry, I mean, these are questions we didn't have a chance to ask, it's the first time I've seen these numbers. So, Mr. Chiaro, do you mind explaining to me why that did change from the 500 over four years to 1,000 in two years?
Yeah, I can answer.
Dr. Adams, are you able to answer?
The information that I've shared with the board in the past during the last three months indicated that over four years, the bargaining unit was looking for arithmetically a total of 8%. If you have 1.6% as the first year and you're not getting a step, there needs to be an adjustment in order to bring that person up to at least the 2% range. And so that $1,000 is what's necessary to get people to that, that point, which in terms of budget, that's, I think it's about 71 thousandths of 1%, so it's, it's really not a large number in the big scheme of things.
It's only for, if I understand correctly, members who cannot move a step. As step, so they're at the end, yeah.
So they're a 1/6 and a 1/8.
And so it designed over two years to balance the fact that it was lighter in the beginning, heavier in the end?
Yes.
So can you add one and two, correct?
Yes.
I'd like to ask my colleague next to me, can you explain...
Does she have a name?
Yes, well, my colleague next to me.
Okay.
I have one colleague, I can, you're explaining what we were saying about the $110 million budget and the 390 bearings, because I'm not sure I quite understood what you're saying.
Absolutely. The $110 million was not a budget, the $110 million was actually what was collected in taxes from the taxpayers. When you have that much money that you're dealing with, the 389, when you have 389,000, it goes very quickly when you're trying to do a tax cap, when you're trying to collect taxes from the taxpayers, you have a lot of things that can change, so that's what I'm saying, you have 389,000 to spread overall.
Okay, good. So the way I would, how I would interpret that is the 390 is a third of a percent.
Yes, yes.
You're gonna go over the tax cap, with that, you would have to pierce the tax cap, now you have to go to the voters to approve.
How much of reserve?
I'm not, I'm not clear percent about that, but that's why I want to clarify.
Is Mr. Chiaro still around? Thank you, I'm sorry, I'm glad you're asleep. Have you looked at trends in neighboring districts in terms of what they are providing?
I think Ross is probably the one who reported, I saw some data recently.
Okay.
I didn't see a number for Plots now, everyone else was on ones, I believe, seven.
Was it in the high ones? Because I also looked a little bit online, and some of them are easier to find than others, they start from 1% on, I've seen 1.25, I actually pulled, I pulled, and I shared that with all, I shared that with all my colleagues by email related to the documents. So some of them use the CPI with a cap, and, and so I won't mention any of that, but they range between 1 and high ones, like you said.
I've seen, I've seen that document, I think, all around myself.
Right, right. So that's pulled from each site, so they range from, from 1 to high ones, if I'm not mistaken. And I've looked at some in Westchester as well, I know 175 was like the most actually in one of the numbers. Okay, so. Are there any further questions?
We were given tonight another set of...
Can you put your microphone?
We were given, we were given this evening another set of numbers, 1.5, 6, 7, 8.
That was another scenario suggested at the November 6 meeting, that we had not even gotten the report on in the emails we received last night. So that was the balance of the four reports we got last night, because we were looking at four scenarios. So that was the fourth one that wasn't included in the email last night.
Was this ever given to the union to speak about?
Dr. Adams can answer this.
No, it was not.
Yes, it's just a little bit less in terms of numbers and so forth.
The suggestion that those numbers were suggested... I can't hear what he said, because you guys are cheering loud. Hold on, I really need to hear my colleagues, it's important for me to hear.
I respond to that as what are we gonna do, nickel and dime them? I think that was discussed, and we said that...
The fourth, okay, to answer that comment, to answer, to answer Mr. Donnelly and Mr. Karen's, that fourth scenario was recommended or suggested as one of the possible scenarios, since that's what we were doing at the last meeting on November 6, because it fell within their...
Why did I ask me when I walked out the door, I was confident...
Sorry, I'm just gonna finish a sentence, wasn't the range that we were seeing other districts are, you know, in our, in our...
And we also don't know where other districts are in their contract, if that contract was expiring or what, so they're, they're gonna be sitting down to negotiate another contract.
A lot of the more, that's what we've done, we've discussed...
When I left session the other day, I was confident that we had tasked Dr. Adams with seeing if the union would, was, would work with us with the numbers presented, 1/6, 1/8, 2.2, 2.4. And that was the way I left the session, November 6th.
Yes.
That was my understanding of where we stood as a former president. And I believed Dr. Adams, we asked you to meet with Mr. Canning, the union, and to see if these numbers would work. That was my understanding.
Okay, Dr. Adams, everybody would like to speak? Are you, would you like to speak?
Sure. I want to thank the, the teachers that have engaged in informal negotiations with me since August. It's varied in terms of composition, don't know if I'm allowed to share those names, am I allowed to share the names? John Canty, Patty Marina, Patty Mackia, I've got to tell the board and your membership, they were very honest from the very beginning, and, and it was with the backdrop that four years ago, when we went through this, four years ago, three years ago, and what a horrible experience that was, I think maybe for both sides, and I would say a lack of trust would be an understatement, and, and so it took time to have these conversations, but whatever I asked of your membership to provide information to me, they did so. They asked me for information, sometimes it didn't match up with the way it should, we provided that information back. So it was an ongoing conversation for months, and I would apprise the board of how those negotiations were going. There came a, a point in time where it was very clear to me that arithmetically the 8% over four years was what was really the gold standard for this. Whether it's 152522, or 16182224, or whatever, that seemed to be the minimum threshold. And at any point, of course, the parties could go from informal to formal negotiations, I think January 15th is the trigger date for that, and the advice that I was given was keep the dialogue going, and, and that's what we did. Information, a lot of information has been shared, maybe respectfully, some, some questions are, are coming to the surface now, but on November the 6th, I would agree with member Tom Donnelly, that there seemed to be a consensus around a certain proposal, and that I was to communicate with your president, did the next day, and that was asked to me with the numbers people, the two patties, which I did, I think it was the day after Veterans' Day, I guess it was on a Tuesday morning, met with them at the middle school, and it was indicated to me by your team, 16182224, and $1,000 first two years for those that don't receive a step, and we're going to have it voted on by the membership this afternoon. Okay? And being diligent, I informed the board confidential memo, so it's not subject to anybody's eyes, and indicated at that time that I support the proposal, I still support the proposal, I recommend it for approval, and that it would be an action item on the November 20th agenda. And on or about Friday, whatever that was, the 16th, I received 10 or 12 questions requiring additional information or follow-up, and met with our president, and we went over the questions so that I had a deeper understanding of what was being requested. You all remember, I think we had a snow day on Friday, and so, well, we left early Thursday, and then I think we took the day off Friday. But then, when Anthony came in on Monday, Anthony was able to put numbers together for me, and that information was shared Monday night. There was a faux pas, one of the 15161718 was not available because there was an honest mistake made. But those questions that...
I'm sorry, I have to interrupt, Friday night, we got the...
No.
We got the last one.
No, Monday night.
Monday night.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I heard wrong. I apologize.
And so the electronic versions went out Monday night, couldn't do them on, couldn't do them on Friday, but I had the questions, you know, from the November 6 meeting, I received them on the 16th, and tried to diligently have the responses there too. One of the questions that you've heard tonight, and was the email was about how much have we used in our reserves over the last five years? You heard Anthony say zero, so we've not done any reserves. And, and I think perhaps those of you that I'm looking at might be my harshest critics when it comes to balancing the budget. I'm extraordinarily cautious when it comes to balancing the budget, and certainly several years ago, you know, we didn't see eye to eye, still don't, but they're on some things, but the, the, I would not propose a, a ratification of an agreement to the board that I thought was going to bankrupt the district. That would just be futile. To one of the questions, I believe, that the board president asked Anthony was about the four-year projection, and I believe you told me that four-year projection, or the projection that you had shared with the board this past spring, has actually improved, has it not?
Because of the TRS reduction.
Because of the TRS, because of the TRS?
At least in, yeah, the first year.
For the time being.
We've tried to be clear with our presentations on projections, it doesn't state requirement, it's difficult to do, and it's illusory at best in that how far out is that projection really gonna last, those assumptions. It's a very fluid process, we do it because we're required to do it, but we've said consistently, we don't really stand behind those numbers beyond a couple of years. The, the recommendation, why I had included this as an action item, I believe in the proposal, I believe it's a reasonable proposal, I believe it's in the best interest of the school district, and I believe it reflects our commitment as a governance team to highly professional, highly successful, caring staff that meet with heart and work with our kids each and every day, I wouldn't recommend it otherwise.
Okay, my comment, Mr. Chiaro, I want to clarify, the TRS, as you said, fluctuates, and so for the time being, I meant...
Yeah, the first bits of news we saw from the 1920 budget, excuse me, 1920 budget was positive, that was the first of the information we got.
And that means you're unable to predict the future.
Well, we won't be able to predict that for the first year.
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I'm not saying something like that. Dr. Adams, I have a couple of questions about your comments, when you said the 8% seems to be the gold standard, can you please clarify what you meant by that?
From the beginning, in terms of the information that was shared, and going back seven or eight years, we took a look at the CPI and what the contract had settled for over the last seven or eight years, I think there was at least one zero, maybe two, two zeros, and taking a look at CPI, which one of the most recent numbers, I think was at 2.0 or maybe 2.1, and so the conversation was trying to work around that 2% number, so the original proposal was four twos, and as has been alluded to tonight, and in the last two or three years, the building aid cliff of 2.3 million or 2.4 million that goes into effect in 1920, we've planned for, but it would be helpful if instead of two that first year, we could get it down to maybe a 1/6, that buys us a couple of extra $100,000, maybe $300,000, and that would be helpful for the district.
Dr. Adams, you're mentioning a comparison that doesn't put into account the steps at all, it just puts into account only the percentage compared to the CPI, but you always add a step and a percentage when you compare the CPI. Moreover, you're saying that there was difficulty in the past, I'd like to really just go back to history a little bit, there was, there was lack of trust in whatever it is you just recorded, at the time you recommended to the board, seeking external counsel to help you with the process of relocating, did not want to personally... the process of relocating, did not want to personally take on that responsibility that is yours to negotiate. And apparently, this time, you felt comfortable negotiating, and that's a good thing and a positive thing, and your recommendations were different this time. But your recommendations to the board, and agreements with collective bargaining, once they have a, an element of expenditure, it becomes the board's responsibility to assure that the expenditures are, will actually be affordable and can be, in fact, projected into the duration of that contract. So the negotiation piece is totally yours. I disagree with something you said, that you were asked to negotiate those figures because while those figures were looking promising in appearance as a preliminary step, I, the way I understand it, most board members needed more information and had more questions that were supposed to be discussed today, and we allotted the time to do that earlier. And the action was projected for the next meeting in December. Secondly, all questions, I also disagree with, all questions shared on November 16th during our agenda setting meeting and via email earlier, none of them were new questions. They were all reports that were requested October 16th, with the exception of one more that was requested November 6th. So it's a little difficult that we got those figures last night, as per, you know, Monday night, you said, and I thought, I heard you wrong. And some of it we just got a couple hours ago. To really be expected to take action on something that we are still, we still have other questions, especially if you could, you know, show us the full budget expectation and projections for the four years, then we would be assured that, not bankruptcy, I'm hoping bankruptcy would not be at all part of your recommendation, but fiscal capability without stressing or straining the budget, without having to cut any programs, that we don't want to see cut without having to lay off staff, that I personally don't want to ever see laid off. We had, we had layoffs a few years ago. Can you remind me what year we had layoffs? That are most, layoffs?
2013.
2013. And I recall maybe 27 staff members from this union. I'm sorry?
It's just our group. The first two layoffs was just the aides de mons, that's it.
No, then we lost librarians?
That was when you were the board.
I wasn't.
No, she wasn't.
I wasn't.
She was very helpful to us.
But it's not, I wouldn't point fingers to other board members either. I didn't do that. I see how difficult the process is, I'm living it now. And I've been warned about this before running years ago. It's not an easy process, and it has to be vetted and has to be thorough, because board members have a fiduciary responsibility, okay? In front of the community, the teachers, the parents, all taxpayers, and most importantly, our students, to sustain the district into the future and not just look under our feet. So going back to the, my question is, we have, we had 27 layoffs, I believe, in this particular collective bargaining group.
And we gave them all back, so that goes to show you that the budget is getting better, because now we're back at 92.
And we want to make sure we never...
Appreciate all those points that I made.
And I'm really glad about that. And that comes with what? Fiduciary responsibility and being able to not just guarantee that those layoffs don't happen, that building closure that has never been brought to this board, I want to enforce that that has never been discussed officially, but is kind of an undercurrent, you know, secretive conversation. If you will let me, just, what were the layoffs? I believe social workers, library media specialists, technology specialists, and...
And we identified two.
And I want to ensure we never, never have to do this again, because anybody...
We brought social worker side and speech service.
And I'm really glad about that. Thank you. And that was Board of Education and Administration's collaborative work.
Yes.
Working together.
We're all in the trap.
And trusting the numbers and being responsible, so that's what we are doing, basically. Any further comments?
Just vote. Vote. Just vote. Come on.
Stop talking.
Let's get it done. You can't hold on.
Robert's rules.
Robert's rule.
What's he looking for?
He's doing...
I got it right here.
The answer to the question. I know. She's nice, but she won't say that yet.
Oh, no. I think I spoke to him ways ahead. That's all right. What are we looking for?
So I'm going to speak for myself here. I just think for myself, I'm willing to do so, and that will move on the motion. It is very important that our administration looks at our salary schedules and compares them with others. That was one of the inquiries I made.
You mean other districts?
Yes, sir.
Like, like the stature of this district?
Yes.
And the historical stature of this district?
I'm sorry.
And what this district, what this district has meant to the district?
We always want to be forefront and on the top. That is everyone's intention.
With all due respect, since I've been the person at the table the whole time tonight...
Yes, but actually, one second. But it's not... How close they are to the tax cap and assuring that it's not fierce is something I'd like to see on paper and recorded. I'd like to see that... Okay. One second, I'll just finish what I'm saying and, and you'll see how it's going. And the budget, the general picture that we were not given with all... Let me finish the...
Just like I mentioned, I need to find a little place to show me the questions that are really brought up. I mean, we have a backup in Suffolk.
Ms. Marina, just one second, I'll figure out how to do that. Thank you. I'm just waiting for orders. Thank you. I have many more financial unanswered questions. I can't speak for myself, I can't speak for my colleagues. As a matter of fact, I actually asked if we can be there to hear those answers if administration was not providing to us and was told not a good idea. Not you. So I am missing information. Tonight, last night was not the right time to get all information to make such a important financial decision that takes this district into the next four years. And if you, excuse me one second, I need to know how to go about the next. Thank you, hold on one second. Okay, while it's out of the order of business of the business meeting, I would like to, at my discretion as board president, allow Ms. Patty Marina to please come through. I really plead to everyone to be very quiet. As you know, I want to hear from her, and we all want to hear from her, so this is my final, thank you.
First of all, I want to apologize to the five of you that I'm cutting out of order. So, but, good evening. My name is Patty Marina. I am a proud graduate of Suffolk School System. I can honestly say, I personally am proud to be a man. I've been a sixth grade teacher here in the Suffolk School District for the last 25 years. I wear the hat of a chief negotiator, and I'm one of the vice presidents of the Suffolk Education Association. My most important hat is I'm a proud mother of two students in the Suffolk High School, and proudly a taxpayer in this community. As you can see, many members of the SCA have shown up tonight, expecting to hear a discussion, which they've got a good one, and I appreciate that, regarding the action item on the agenda that pertains to our collective bargaining agreement. It is extremely disheartening that the conversations that have gone on and hearing people's positions. As the boards are aware, the superintendent and the negotiation team for the SCA have been working for the last four months to put this agreement together. Dr. Adams, I respect, and I appreciate the open and honest conversation. It is understandable, you may have questions regarding this agreement. This package has been on the table for well over six weeks. The SCA sat with Dr. Adams numerous times, going over numbers, the numbers you are asking for, the total cost of this package. The district also employs an entire business department, who should be quite capable of hashing out all of the costs associated with this agreement. Aman, you called me. We had a very lengthy conversation in early October regarding this new collective bargaining agreement. Our conversation occurred...
I will interrupt. You're fine, it's me and I were polite, thank you.
You called me, but we won't get into semantics. Our conversation occurred prior to you receiving the actual proposal from Dr. Adams. During our conversation, I offered to provide you with any information and your assistance that might help better you and your colleagues here to better understand the SCA position. I emphasized to you that I was willing to sit with you and any board member who might have any questions or concerns. As of tonight, you have never reached out to me to voice any questions or concerns. Additionally, I asked Dr. Adams to make the board aware that I would make myself available if any information was needed. I have been on the negotiating team for the last 20 years. I've had the pleasure of wearing the chief negotiator hat for my union for the last four contracts. I am proud to say that the Suffolk Education Association has always been a cooperative partner with the district and the Board of Education. We have been transparent and fair to the district. To not see this agreement be voted on tonight is a disappointment to the negotiating team and the 403 members that are part of this union. I look forward to the vote. I think it's time, definitely overdue. I want to know where you stand, and we will see from there. Thank you.
This is, this is a conversation I used to have, and we need to get answers and get them promptly, and, and do our job. And so, I'm not trying away from what's happening tonight.
Let's just start the questions, we don't have work in the morning.
So, so thank you for graciously accepting to take questions. Ms. Marina, you mentioned that the offer on the MOA today has been in the works for six weeks. But the two offers we were given on October 16th did not include tonight's. So if you can clarify when that came into play, because the first time we saw that was, was after the initial two, two offers. Thank you.
With all due respect to Dr. Adams, I don't represent your team. I meet with my negotiating team daily, I update weekly, I update my president weekly. So where that breakdown in communication is, comes on your side, between the dynamics. I can tell you, Dr. Adams, since October 2nd, and I have agreed in the merits of a proposal. I then, as Dr. Donnelly said, 100% correct, you guys countered that at your 1-6, 1-8, 2-2, 2-4. I brought that back to my team, our team agreed to it.
And when was that roughly? I'm just, the timetable is...
Well, October 3rd is where I was told it was going to be shared. I was told that the president and board declined the folders being shared. So then that got projected back to the October, don't quote my dates.
So you had the 1-6, 1-8, 2-2, and 2-4 since October 3rd?
We did not. We countered that back to me on the 16th.
Oh, okay.
So then on the 16th is when I brought it back, we countered that to you, and that's...
You were told on October 16th that this Board of Education has that counterproposal?
No, it was shared with me that there was the concern, which Dr. Adams had shared all the way throughout the process, of your tax, I'm sorry, your state aid concern. So there was always the conversation that the first year, if we could be gracious and help out the district.
Trying to get, go, because your session...
Which is really been on theme for the last eight years, Dr. Adams shared. And I think, as you see here, as a taxpayer, many of us are here, we're willing to work. So I heard that, and that's where the conversation then was directed more towards the 1-6. You did not tell me that that...
Starting off from the 16th.
You're narrowing down the debate, sure, sounds great, 16th.
All right. Because our only meetings in the past since the first folder was the 16th and November 6th. I can tell you that on October 16th, this Board of Education, although the superintendent has the legal right to negotiate the contract, on October 16th, we did not authorize, representing us, that those numbers were acceptable. We had not given that authorization, so that it is, you're very accurate, there's a break in communication again.
Well, it's the dynamics here, and I think out of all due respect right now, I'm going to ask you guys to vote on it. If you guys decided to know, I'll see you on January 15th. But I'll tell you right now, this isn't a threat, it's a promise, it's going to cost you a lot more.
To clarify, the item being on the agenda tonight, since the comments were made regarding this, we received, we received information of the fact that our policy requires these items to be in conjunction between the president and the superintendent. This is an occurring theme, unfortunately, it's not the first time that items have been added to the agenda, or an agenda has been activated.
Will we have Dr. speak in this?
Of course. While I'm finishing, or when I can. Thank you very much. So what I was trying to say is that I met with, Dr. Adams took the time to recount the events of the last few days. We're usually scheduled to meet on Thursday for agenda activation. We're usually scheduled to meet on Thursday for agenda activation. Instead, because of the weather and other personal reasons, the schedule was, the meeting was pushed to Friday. We met Friday morning. We were handed an agenda and the agenda did not include this item. So this is of utmost concern because our policy requires that the agenda we agreed to in that meeting, whether it was Thursday or Friday, includes all our action items. And that no action items get added beyond that without us running it by each other and being, it being the voting parties.
What policy was that?
The President, I'm sorry.
What number is that? What policy was that?
Okay, 2342 and 3120. Please check them. And there's been, yes, 3120 and 32. All right, hold on. 2342, sorry, my numbers are getting- 2342, Mr. Marx. And 3120.
That's one in consultation with the Board President.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. By the same token, I actually forgot to mention an item that day and I did not request our board clerk to post the item. I sent Dr. Adams a message and if he had said, "No, you can't talk about this", that would be how it is. So in consultation, both of us. And that assures that the communication collaboration that's expected in setting agendas. So I'm just, just a disclaimer, because again, I was given credit for getting this on the agenda. It was put on the agenda with that prior discussion. It was added to the agenda on Friday night. The recommendation that was made from our legal counsel that it gets removed on behalf of the Board and it was not removed. Because we wanted to have the thorough numbers and perhaps vote on this on December 4th. So we are being pushed to vote on this tonight because it was never removed and therefore you had to witness discussions that could have been already done and over with and the numbers that we could have already discussed and not just get the numbers last night and some of it today. So that's my disclaimer. Dr. Adams, go ahead.
Sure. Mr. Marx referenced policy 2342. And I'd like to just walk through that a little bit. It's been a confusing point for some people over the last two or three years. But if you look at the very first statement in the policy, "The Superintendent, comma, 'in consultation with the Board President, comma, shall prepare the agenda for the Board meeting." Okay? Now, I'm sure there's some English teachers out here. I see a few. I believe "in consultation with" is an idiom. I'm a math person, I'm not an English person. But it seems like the stumbling part is what does that language mean? "In consultation with"? Did you have a discussion? Did you talk about? Unlike what I just heard, it does not mean agreement at all. It says the Board or the Superintendent is the one who prepares the agenda. I don't require approval by anybody. I don't, I'm not really interested if somebody wants to tell me to veto something. We'll have a conversation, but ultimately that responsibility falls on me to prepare the agenda. It was clear last week when I sent the memo out, I was putting it on the agenda. We had a snow day on Friday, as I've said previously. I was handed the agenda drafted by the district clerk. She came in on Friday, so hats off to her. And I got it just prior to the meeting. But it does not require approval by anybody. "In consultation with", "a discussion", "talk about", that's really end of story. Now, as it relates to policy, and it was referenced, policy 3120. The policy 2410, 3120, and 3300 invoke upon me an affirmative responsibility as it relates to policy. I'm required to implement them. I'm required to enforce them. And I'm required to interpret them. So as I look at 2342, the interpretation seems pretty clear on its face. To the extent Counselor Fromson has been invoked here that it should be taken off the agenda, "A legal opinion is based upon the facts that are provided", or the information, I won't say facts, the information provided. And in this case, you look at the policy. The policy is clear on its face. I don't know how it can be any clearer. Does not require approval by anyone.
Okay, Dr. Adams, is there a reason you can give me that when you met on Friday to review the agenda as per policy at your, the schedule you chose, that I was handed an agenda that does not have this item? If you have been planning to put it on all along?
Amani, I do not type the agenda. The district clerk types the agenda.
So this is now not going to be our responsibility, it's who typed it. So when there's something missing on the agenda, you and I discussed, there's an item missing by the way. So even though you don't have it in print, we're going to be adding this and that. Or we think of something together and we add as we speak. How come you didn't mention that you will be adding that item because it's missing on the type of agenda?
I'm not sure I follow your line.
I'm done. Thank you. We will be now voting unless anybody wants to say. Ready? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Kern. Mr. Shapiro.
Yes.
Mr.-
Darling.
Darling.
Come on.
All those against signify by saying nay. I'm against. Anyone else? Any of you? Mr. McKenzie?
Yes.
And, Mr. Green? Okay, family way past it. I'd like to make a motion. It's my parents, everybody. Actually, I don't have to tell people I'd like to make a motion. Okay, I can make a motion to amend the agenda. To add a revocation and and I'm going to read those over to them suggesting. I'm sorry, is that Dr. Adams' question or?
No, that's my question.
Okay. Any board member can put a motion and it can be turned down or anyone, not just the board president.
What policy is that?
I'm sorry, it's the open meeting law of Dr. Adams, which supersedes policy as you're very well aware.
In fact, it does not. So I'll point out to the Board President that that would be a violation of the Commissioner's decision. Open meetings law does not address agenda setting at all. In fact, if you look in the open meetings law, the word "agenda" does not appear in any shape, form, or fashion. The board is required to follow its policies and to try to amend the agenda at a board meeting is a violation of policy, plain and simple.
So all the amendments that have happened historically in board meetings are all illegal?
The superintendent, because he has the authority to prepare the agenda and amend the agenda. The Board President does not have that authority, nor does the Board as a whole have that authority.
Okay, so it's, as per meeting law, anybody attending a meeting can make a motion. The motion fails or is accepted at you. Dr. Adams has allowed these motions in the past. So I'm going to again ask our counsel to come in the hallway. Thank you. Please vote. Very sorry. Bella had to make a motion to go into executive. I need a first, sorry. Need a motion to go into executive.
That's outrageous.
Ask her that turns, request. Mr. Kern, second. Need to take a vote, please come back. Okay. All right, Terry, you would like to do this, anything? Mr. McKenzie made a motion, second. Mr. McKenzie, all those in favor signify by saying aye. And we're voting to clarify, I'm going to consult with the turn. Mr. Shapiro?
Nay.
Mr. Darling? Mr. Kern? And I'm an aye, so that's 43. But we will be back as fast as possible.
So I just want to take this opportunity to thank all of you for your wonderful, amazing work. And I know that many of you have somewhere to be in like less than eight hours. So I, principals, we're going to go ahead and do our elementary C S I presentation. It's amazing. Thank you, all the elementary teachers, secondary staff. The secondary principals did a fabulous job two weeks ago. And I totally understand if you would prefer to watch it on video once again. So we really appreciate everything you do. Very happy for you. But understand, because I know some of you are going to need extra help at 6:00, 6:30 tomorrow morning. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, how was it?
I think it's so, it's so, it's so.
I don't know about that. That's what I'm, I'm going to continue like that.
I'm shaking.
Oh, boy, anytime.
You have to forget that now.
How about my church?
I still have, was not happy with me as well. Yeah.
Not in the second.
I see your feet are a little shorter. You're feeling a little better.
You're moving a little better.
Everything's so hard.
I don't like that. Everything's so hard. I don't know, I can breathe.
Oh. Stop, stop.
Nobody put there. Hug everybody like this.
Sale, let's go in.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
She's got.
Hey, 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 hey.
Yes, all of your teachers. That's great. How old is everybody?
Twenty-three. Oh, my God. Oh, my God, that's not right. That's not right. She's.
That would have been.
Yes.
Oh, there it is.
Time.
Really now it's easy. Higher. What about mom? So wow. Brian's name? Anything's okay. No, no. I heard. I heard him was here. Yeah. I don't know.
Just waiting for everyone to get back to this. Please, and I apologize to our councilor on here tonight for this very long meeting. And again, let's vote. He was having his.
Life sickness? No, he's fine. He's life.
Eight, two more, let's go. Just to clarify what goes on, I've been instructed that whenever the board has a legal question, we can't ask it in public. So this is why we ran back and forth here. It's important for us to check, and that's why our attorney is present. Oh, thank you for your patience. I appreciate it. Are they coming? At this time, we will move forward with our administrative reports, elementary C-SIP highlights. Ms. Webber?
Let's go. All right. I will, folks that are at your back there, if you're comfortable watching on the side, I will say this presentation is quite, it's a number of minutes.
That's okay.
Okay, just get yourself comfortable. You're going to be there for a few minutes. Well, more than.
So two weeks ago, we had the pleasure of seeing the highlights of the secondary C-SIPS. And tonight, we have the pleasure of the highlights of the elementary C-SIPS with five elementary schools. I will say this presented a little bit of a logistical challenge. Uh, but our theme for tonight is really about how much we have in common and how our differences can really give us opportunities. So we thought this quote was just so fitting. Our similarities bring us to a common ground. Our differences allow us to be fascinated by each other. And I think you're going to see great examples of that fascination tonight. So just a reminder of C-SIP. So a C-SIP has three priorities. Improve student achievement in literacy, improve student achievement in mathematics, and improve student social emotional skills. Uh, the priorities then have goals and action plans, which are about all the resources we need to make these things happen. The goals are measurable. They define the metric being used. Some measure growth, some measure achievement. The action plans articulate the activities that occur to support the goal. They can include who's responsible, what resources we need, what's the timeline, why are we doing it? What's the research basis? And how are we going to do it? And how is progress and success going to be measured? So an area obviously that we all have in common is our focus on literacy. And first and foremost, the important part about literacy is that we follow a standards-based curriculum. We teach the standards, the state standards, at each grade level. We sometimes do that in different ways, sometimes with different resources, but we all teaching to the same standards. Uh, one of the areas that we've grown over the last couple of years that we're using together are the units of study. These are the units of study. Sometimes you may hear them called the Lucy Kaufkins units. You'll hear them called the TC or Teachers College units. They're all the same thing. So we started a couple of years ago with the units of study in writing. We are now full-blown, full implementation, K through five, with the units of study in writing. Along the way, many of our teachers have fallen so in love with the units of study model, which is the workshop model, that many of our teachers are using the reading units of study also. This year, TC kind of put a bow on their package and offered us phonics units of study for the first time that we're piloting in three of our schools in kindergarten and first grade. This work is, has only been made possible by the amazing work of our literacy coaches, Sue Carrio and Millie Vega. This is an investment the board has made over the last two years, and it has been an amazing investment. Uh, the teachers are so appreciative of the high-level quality PD they get, the at-the-elbow, in-the-classroom support they get from our coaches. It's been really incredible. During the last three years, we've also worked with an outside group called District Management Group. That used to be the District Management Council, so DMC became DMG. And so we've been working with that group to really align our literacy practices with research-based best practices. So we're now two and a half years into a three-year commitment with that group. And that's what's been able to us to really identify phonics as an area of need, PD and support as an area of need, and, um, make sure that we're on track to support our students with the best research-based literacy practices. An exciting thing that happened this year, uh, for the first time, all five of our elementary schools participated in One School, One Book. And everyone who is an elementary-aged child knows about this. Uh, so we had the pleasure of reading Charlotte's Web, and we'll be celebrating that at Viola next week, um, because we got snowed out of our event. Uh, the other schools read Lemonade Roars, World According to Humphrey, and Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory. And the cool thing we did is we matched up the schools so that now we can trade books. So we'll all have another opportunity to read a second book, but we only had to purchase the books once. So the schools are working together to coordinate that. So that's been a really kind of fun, very celebratory, um, event. So at our recent superintendent's conference day, uh, the beginning of the day, we met by grade levels at the elementary, and we had just a really open-ended question for everyone to start with. And our open-ended question was, what's going well? And the responses were so much around literacy, which was so great to see, because I can tell you in my six years here, that wasn't always the case. So it was so, um, rewarding to see that our work with DMG, our work with units of study, our work with the literacy coaches, was really bringing people together. And in just a totally general prompt of what's going well, so many of the responses were around literacy. These are some of the quotes from the teachers, the word detective unit specific to units of study, but it's really just about how much our kids, I mean, our kids have passion for reading and writing. I mean, what more could you want? That was just really amazing. Um, so that's kind of put the, the bow on literacy, and we look forward to continuing to grow in this area. Uh, next we have math. Again, a standards-based curriculum. We have some different resources in use. Uh, some are, the difference is primary and intermediate. In some cases, in primary, we have a couple of different resources. But what it really comes down to is a standards-based curriculum in mathematics. We also use district-wide common assessments. Uh, we use Dreambox and iXL are resources, uh, that all of our students use that are web-based. In STEAM, we have a tremendous number of opportunities. They don't always look exactly the same from one school to the other. We have Tinkerin' Tires, we have a Creator's Cove, we have other means for things. But the experiences the kids have are very similar. Makerspaces, robotics, coding. Project Lead the Way is our science curriculum, so everyone does that. That includes coding, engineering, um, and some life science. Engineering is elementary, again, as part of our science curriculum, so all of our students do that. We also had the opportunity, uh, that we're in our second year of the Computer Science STEAM Academy. That's a K-8, um, project that we're working on with the Lyric. We received a reward for that, an award for that last spring, you may recall. That's been really exciting work to really, um, articulate our K-8 STEAM curriculum. And then we have our newest project, PDL. Uh, thank you again to the board's support for it. Ken Wojciechowski has been. Thank, I'm not sure if they're still here, but we had an exciting project today. Uh, there was a trip, the high school kids went to Sloughsburg to share their writing that was inspired by the Sloughsburg students. I have two, um, tweets up there. Exciting things going on in Mr. Grammar Star's class and in Ms. Mullins' class. Those are both fourth grade classes. Viola at Sloughsburg has already had a chance to participate, and Montebello will be up next. So very exciting work with the project-based learning. And of course, our social-emotional learning. We spent a lot of time two weeks ago talking about the Yale EI ruler. So we're not going to talk about that today, I'm just going to remind you about it. Uh, also at our elementary schools, we have very robust character education programs. Again, they have a little bit different twist from one school to another, but all of the focus on, is on building, you know, young people's self-esteem, giving them the social skills they need, the emotional skills they need to be successful. And if, from our clinical staff, we also have the dialectical behavior therapy that we spoke about at the secondary C-SIPS. So I think with that, I am going to turn this over to the principals. We're going to go one at a time. They are on a very, very strict timeframe, so I'm going to ask you to please not interrupt them. We'll go through the whole thing, we'll entertain questions at the end. Um, tremendous, wonderful leaders, amazing principals. When I think about how many things they do in a day, you know, our schools are unique, our elementary schools are unique in that they're a little, on the smaller side than some districts, so we don't have assistant principals, which means our principals do everything, like everything. So, um, they're an incredible group to work with. Um, they lead tremendous staff, incredibly hard-working teachers, wonderful students, provide amazing opportunities for our students. So we're going to go in alphabetical order by school. And so we're going to start with Cherry Lane and Principal Aguilar.
You said the timer for. All right. Thank you, Lee, and good evening. And thank you, Dr. Adams, and the Board of Education for giving me an opportunity to present all the wonderful things that are taking place at Cherry Lane Elementary. All right, so, um, and I also would like to say it's a privilege to present tonight with my colleagues. It's the first time we've been able to present together, and, um, I just want to say their dedication to their schools and the community inspire me on a daily basis, so thank you, guys. All right, so, um, this year's theme, um, for Cherry Lane is, uh, learning today and leaving tomorrow, building a 21st century mindset. So when we ask ourselves, who are we at Cherry Lane and who are our students? We are a community of thoughtful learners. Cherry Angels are resilient. They are humanitarian at heart, and our students are empathetic and demonstrate, uh, this on a daily basis. They are creative, and they are starting to really understand that making mistakes is a part of the learning process. And they value that process of learning over the product. So there are many factors and components that go into preparing all of our students for the 21st century. And many of these elements actually build on each other and integrate with one another. And this is just a visual that signifies, uh, all those components and how each of them work together and make sure that Cherry Lane is successful. So tonight, I'm going to talk to you about just three main pieces of some of the things that we are going to improve our practice and to make sure our students are successful. So the first priority, like Lee was saying, is to increase the student achievement in literacy. So as you can see, there are a few interventions that we use and utilize, and those interventions are around the circle area. Our NWA map is just one of those areas. So, and what this does is it shows us our students' growth over the last three years in second, third, and fourth and fifth grade. It allows us to see if our students are, have met or exceeded the projected growth. So as you can see, if you look at last year's growth, um, our mean RIT for the fall and spring show that we had an increase in all grade levels. We also use, utilize the Achieve 3000 program, which is a web-based reading program based on students' Lexile levels in grades three, four, and five. And it differentiates the instruction for our students as well. We started this program back in December of 2015, and last year, we actually saw a 31% increase of students that demonstrated college and career readiness. So at the beginning of the year, students were 49% ready, and by the end of the year, it was 80% of our students. So our second priority is increasing the student achievement in math. Again, we look at our NWEA to see if our students meet or exceed the projected growth. And as you can see, on an average, our mean RIT for the fall and the spring shows an increase in all those levels. So our third priority is to improve student, uh, behavior and attendance. All right, so our character education program continues to develop over the years, as well as our Makerspace program. So for the second year in a row, we are working with our teachers and our instructional facilitator on a gradual release model that we call the Makerspace Partnership. You can see that our students will have an opportunity. You can see that our students will have an opportunity for exposure to this program at least once a trimester. This doesn't include the exposures that they're already getting through, through their art classes, through learning opportunities groups. And of course, what I love about this space more than anything is that it reinforces that growth mindset, that mistakes are a part of the learning process, as I said before, and that perseverance is a part of being successful. So again, our students, our 2nd grade tigers, our Cherry Angels, they are creative. They love to play and explore. They are critical thinkers. They are problem solvers. And they collaborate, no matter if it's in the classroom or in the Makerspace, or in the hallways, or in the art or music classes. They love to learn and grow, and we love to teach them. So all of these components and many more are a part of what makes Cherry Lane successful. Thank you. Good evening, almost morning, but good evening, very happy. Thank you, everyone, for your attention and for anyone who stayed to listen to our presentation. So five years ago, we had a meeting that developed the vision and the mission of the school. And it's one of the things that I'm really proud of, because as a student, just growing up in my own schooling, and then even as a teacher, my philosophy of education was always grounded in developing the whole child and looking toward the future. So our vision fits beautifully for now, and it should hopefully be a timeless vision for all students. So Montebello Elementary School is a community of mindful leaders who use their voice to inspire others, profoundly impact the world around them. Throughout this presentation, what I think that, hopefully, what we'll see is that our vision stands out in every way we do, in all the decisions that we take. So as you know, I'm sure by now, that we are a school that is grounded in mindfulness, all of our practices. Our morning announcements include kindness messages, trying to reflect on ourselves, our behaviors, our thoughts that we, you know, stories that we might tell ourselves, things where we treat one another and how we speak to one another. Ultimately, caring for self and others, which is one of our themes for this year. High expectations for all and collective responsibility. Understanding that we all play a part in developing the whole child. Recently, I was at a conference, actually a DME conference, and one of the speakers said that many of the challenges ahead are new, and the playbook has yet to be written for meeting students' social-emotional needs. So hopefully, the importance of the social-emotional education that students need to receive, starting at the elementary level, is definitely going to be highlighted throughout the different presentations, as Lee has already mentioned. But especially at Montebello, we really do put a very strong emphasis on the whole child and focusing a lot on mindfulness. This year, I should go back for a second, but just wanted to point out that our enrollment has increased in Montebello. This time last year, we had 364 students, we now have 406 students. We're extremely excited about our new bilingual kindergarten class. So we have 19 students in there, which has been wonderful, with an amazing teacher, our teacher's in there as well. And, we're moving on, we're moving on. So one of our priorities is to increase the student achievement in literacy, as Lee said. And last year, I put out that the goal was for kindergarten to 2nd grade students to have 100% new book benchmark by the end of the 2nd grade. And we did not exactly hit it last year, we're at 82%, but I'm making it the goal again for this year, because I think it's important that we continue to strive for 100%. What I can say is that we had one year's worth of growth for those students, for all students, and that really is ultimately what we're looking for. It is worth of growth, even if they didn't hit benchmark. We are under pressure to place and force to try to help them close that gap as we go on, but its priority is that there's growth and they ask for that growth. Moving on to the NWEA, we're looking to increase the RIT by 10 to 12 points. And this is consistent with the last three years as well. This has always been our increase. And of course, the ELLs in K-5 will also achieve that one year's worth of growth in reading and demonstrating on the DRA. Again, that does not mean that they hit that benchmark within the year, but they definitely will make their one year's worth of growth. With Ling Wong-Tan Ma, we are looking to increase the RIT math in grades 3 and 5, about 20 to 25 points, and this is also consistent with the last three years. And we have the district common assessments. We're always looking to go to just see where it is that students need to improve and what we can do to help them. Going back again to the student behavior and attendance, we're always looking to decrease the number of absences that we have. This is an area that we're continuing to struggle in from last year. So this year, I think today or yesterday, I can't remember now, we're looking to pull together some ideas for how we can promote some excitement around being in school, because it's definitely an area that we're starting to struggle with. We do have students that take long vacations now, or have to leave and come back, whatever the case may be. But we want to try to have more of a home-to-school connection so that parents understand the importance of the children being in school. And then hopefully, we will have better news to report next year. But one of the things that we are looking at in terms of student behavior also is that we've really been doing a lot of restorative practices. So we really have had some great training, actually by Ms. Henkra, who is here tonight, who has trained our whole staff, actually all bus drivers and many other AID monitors, on proactive behavior models. And our staff has been very fortunate to have her building and to promote this, really the mindset that every behavior, there's a reason for every behavior, there's a reason for why children do what they do, and that even comes down to their being in school. So really trying to look and reflect on why is it students do what they do and how can we get them to a better place. So in closing, a couple of highlights. The mission of Montebello Elementary School is to foster a passionate learning community with resilient, responsible, resourceful achievers, embrace their unique worth and potential. So a couple of things that we're doing this year to get kids even more excited to be at Montebello. One of the things we were doing is collaborating with the Cambridge Course that was mentioned earlier tonight. We have different high school students coming to talk to students about women's strength and also a fit night that they're planning to have. So we have those two groups of students that are working with us. We also have a call us for a call, so they'll be back to work with our therapeutic classes, where the dogs come in and work with the students. We have the 5th grade work going on with Mr. Wojciechowski. And we're starting something new this year with the We Delivery, which is actually pretty cool, that one of the teachers put in a grant for, where we'll have our own post office at the school. Students will be encouraged to read and write, send letters, and so they have just some more responsibility to be holding, but also just promotes that message of kindness. So those are just a few highlights there. And I'll turn it over now to Ms. Dow.
Thank you very much. So I am the Consul of RP Connor. It is the mission of RP Connor Elementary School to foster a learning environment courage every student can realize is of her fullest potential. And we do that through academic and social-emotional supports, which I will highlight in the presentation. So some RPC spotlights, some things that we're proud of that are new this year. We were very fortunate to receive a student recognition by Hudson Community Alliance for the work that we do with our wellness policy in our healthy schools and our installation of the indoor walking path. We've also continued our partnership with AAA Safety. We included an additional assembly this year. We did a passenger and pedestrian safety. We have in the past done the bike rodeo. We are looking forward to partnering with the chief and the village police in having a bike to school in May. So stay tuned, safe biking to school. We also opened for the first time our very own Cougar Exploration Den. So we joined our colleagues in the maker movement. So we don't have a lot of space in RP Connor, we are sitting in 460, so it looks tight there. So we did carve out some space in our computer lab. So the kids are really excited about that. We also, for the first time, instituted, the NWA has a pre-K, end-of-pre-K screener that we use with our incoming kindergarten students. We use the dial as a district, which is, it gives you a behavioral component. We can have an academic measure. So given that we have A+ kindergartners, we wanted an academic measure. So we tried for the first time the NWA's end-of-pre-K screener, and it was for the foundational skills. And it gave us really, really great, timely data around their phonemic and phonological awareness and their kinds of print. We were able to build balanced classes from that data. And we also were able to have a parent workshop with the incoming K-parents to give them tools for the various areas that we live where they needed some strengthening. So that was a great tool. We also thank you to the board for their approval. We are now the first school in New York State to be a certified energy bus school. And we thank you for that support. We are following a positive leadership mindset in its adults and students, and it's made a tremendous impact on the school. Thanks to Mrs. Brennan's leadership, we also have a grant for the Crazy Deeds After School Program, which is an amazing hands-on math program that will run throughout the course of the school year and is free for the students. We also developed a new partnership with the Cornell Cooperative. We have an after-school program. The kids go outside and discover nature. There are some pretty cool things out back at RP Connor. Some skulls and all kinds of things that you would not expect. And the kids are loving it, and yeah, it's pretty animal. We also are partnering to have a master gardener program, and that's something I'm really passionate about. So we're really looking forward to sharing that at our meetings. And I was so fortunate, a few weeks ago, Ms. Brennan asked me to co-present with her at the New York State Math Conference. And we presented in Saratoga the RP Connor math story and how we've leveraged leadership to get students to really fall in love with math. So I'm really proud to be able to share our story, you know, for bigger reasons. So that was great. So how do we achieve success at RP Connor? You know, we do many things at RP Connor that we're really proud of. But one of the big things is we do monitor student progress. And we do that throughout the course of the school year so we can make adjustments to our instructional program and make adjustments to our supports. We are very fortunate to have the program AR360, which is a reading program. It's a web-based, students read actual real books, books of their choosing. And then they take quizzes, and the quizzes accumulate to points. The points are their goals. So we have students setting their own reading goals, and they're achieving success and getting incentives. That has really helped us to achieve success in literacy. We also do really fun reading events. We did a March Madness last year that we're going to do again this year. A full month of reading where kids are assigned NCAA teams. It was awesome, Mr. Fabio was holding the trophy. So Kansas City, is she still here? So we were hoping, she wants to retain that trophy. The kids have a lot of pressure last year. We also, as we said, One School, One Book. Yeah, so One School, One Book was amazing. We read Humphrey, we got the town involved, and there was a scavenger hunt in the town. So we included our community members in that. So we're really, really excited about that. And the kids are really talking about books. So that's what we want. So we also are really creative with our Tier 2 and Tier 3 supports. So we have a HADYNL population in our school. So the way we put students in various classes, and we provide push-in support and pull-out standalone. And we also utilize our math specialists and our reading specialists in a unique way to actually maximize all the supports possible. And we constantly are tweaking those supports based on data and various information that we receive. We also have STEAM cycles that take place in the den, which is cool. Ms. STEAM facilitates that. Ms. Lee, she does a different version of it in the lower end. And they go through various cycles, which the kids are excited about. We also celebrate student success. You know, every step is a win. So every time the students do something that, you know, is a point of pride, we celebrate it. So a lot of joy at RP Connor that we're proud of. So in terms of the achievement trajectory, this is something that we are incredibly proud of. Our goal was to increase the literacy by giving the kids more books. And we've seen tremendous gains in that area. We use the Diagnostic Read Assessment as one of our areas, our tools. And you see there that in grades 1 through 5, we went from 68% proficiency to 74% over the course of the year. So 6% goal gain there. We also, the 2nd grade saw tremendous growth. 3rd grade, wow, 11%. That's why I have a trophy. And 5th grade, amazing, 59 to 68. So we're really excited about that. The NWEA, also, we look at projected growth and observe growth. You'll see there that we've exceeded our projected growth by a lot. One thing I want to spotlight is the ENL proficiency. We do have a high number of ENL students, 72 to be exact. If you see there, we looked at the past three years on our ENL levels and how the students are faring on ISAT. So there are levels entering all the way up to commanding. So we are really excited to say that in 2018, 30% of our ENL students are commanding. And 49% are in the expanding area. So you'll see that the blue is becoming less, and the area that's emerging is going down, and the other end is going up. So we're really proud of that. Data-driven instruction, same thing. We look at the data, and we impact our teaching. So you'll see, we use the Common Assessment data up on top as a Lego activity. And we saw that in February, the students were not faring very well in that standard. So we quickly talked about what's happening, what can we do instructionally, what supports we provide. And we're happy to show that in the spring, when we reassessed that standard, we were at 100%, 65%, 3%. And in the state exam, we also saw significant gains compared to the BOCSs and the region. So we are really proud of the data-driven work that we took at RP Connor. In terms of social-emotional, you know, I think, in my opinion, RP Connor is one of the kindest, caring places that I get the pleasure of working in every single day. It is a joy to work there. Kids are skipping down the hall, and I mean that sincerely. We subscribe to a positive school climate. We do use the energy bus. We have a ticket system where everyone contributes. So it's one, we're all together as a team. We have increased our leadership opportunities. We focused on team building. And we were able to decrease our bus referrals, which is one of our goals. And we actually increased it by 19%, which is quite a bit. And we have, 95% of our students met their reading goals last year. We also introduced for the first time a conflict resolution program through Kelso de Frog, where we are giving the students tools they need to problem-solve social situations. So, you know, I'm very proud of the work that we're doing at our school. We know at RP Connor that, you know, it's kids before content, and relationships matter. So we do spend a lot of time on the relationships and strengthening our bonds within the community. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nani. Again, it's a pleasure to be here with my colleagues, my friends. Good evening, board members. Good evening, potential office administration. What's up, Mountie Pride? My name is Joel Wood. I am the proud principal of Sloughsburg Elementary School. And together, our team is collectively working to develop literate, critical thinkers who model character, creativity, and healthy mindsets. So we're going to take a quick flashback to 2017, 2018. A couple initiatives that we put in place that we're pretty excited about. The first one was the Reading Passports Initiative. What we look to do is across the K-5 levels, we log our students' independent reading minutes, and we convert those minutes to miles. We had a map right in front of the library. And each month, we took the students' minutes, and we figured they'd be flew to places like Ireland, Ecuador, France, your name, whoever's there. We also noted 85% participation in New York State ULA in math exams in grades 3, 4, and 5. And I can tell you that it's gone up the last five years I've been at Sloughsburg Elementary School. That's a promising number for us. We can glean good information from those particular exams. It's another multiple measure that all of our colleagues use at our school. So we're glad to see that going in that direction. And we also launched what we call is the Creator's Cove. That's our take on the Makerspace. Mrs. Aguilar and I had a good time working together a couple of years ago. And she certainly taught me a lot about doing this. And one of the things we're looking to do is we work with our instructional facilitator, Mrs. Michelle McKeernan. And Michelle has worked really well with our classroom instructors to find natural moments in the curriculum to make it come to life in the Creator's Cove. So each trimester, our K-5 students have at least one trimester throughout the school year where that's coming to life. For example, our 1st graders might study even in a community. So one of their projects was to actually create what a community would look like, what types of buildings you'd see there. And then they coded dash and dot robots that kind of went through the community. So it was a natural integration of technology and units that are occurring throughout the school year. So our scorecard, looking back at the 1718 school year. I heard my colleagues mention this. We use the developmental reading assessment, too, for one of our literacy measures. We had about 6% growth across the building, grades 1 through 5. So that was a nice data point for us. In grades 2 and 4, we noted that our students made their projected targets in the LA. Our grades 3 and 5 approached their targets. They didn't hit them, but they did have growth, mathematically speaking. We flipped that. In grades 3 and 5 noted growth and hit their projected targets. 2 and 4 didn't hit their targets, but again, growth was made. And again, we aspire to make sure that each of our grade levels had at least one trimester in Creator's Cove, and we were able to achieve that. So kudos to the class we teach at Sloughsburg, and Michelle McKeernan, our rock star, and Charles Trump facilitator. We talk about the whole child. We want our children to feel a sense of belonging, engagement at Sloughsburg Elementary School. We've been working diligently to reduce chronic absenteeism, which was, to be frank, with everyone, an issue back in '16, '17 for our school. We had about 49 students who had 10 absences or more, which is really alarming for us as a school. Last year, we brought that number down to 19 students, which is a nice achievement for us. for us. And initially, we're looking to get to about 13 students or less, so we think we can get there. That would give us about another 33% reduction. We also had the opportunity last year to welcome Dr. Peter Fischkin. We received him from Montebello last year. He has a bright reputation. And what we asked Dr. Fischkin to do, as our new psychologist at Sulzberg, was to fashion his schedule so that he could provide face time to the children of Sulzberg Elementary School. So what we asked him to do is, we want him to work towards eight hours throughout the school year where he has face time with our children. He's drawn upon a program called Second Step. It's a curriculum that helps him to deliver concepts to children, including empathy, coping, perspective, problem-solving. They talk with each other. What our kids need, they need face time. He's giving them the face time. Super proud of that. Our reading team's been growing over the last couple of years. We worked with the Sulzberg community last year to collect recyclables. We collected over 500 recyclables. We brought those into the Creator's Cove throughout the year and we used them for different projects. Our old friend, Coach Wojciechowski, he was there with Coach Behrens and Coach McNally at the time, and our friends across those two buildings found a system called Heart Zones. So the children will come to visit, they'll put these devices on, and they could actually watch their heart rates as they're exercising in the gymnasium, so that was a nice initiative. We didn't know at the time we were going to bring Coach Behrens to Sulzberg and that Kevin would be leaving to be a PBL coach, but that was kind of cool, kind of timely, serendipitous if you will. And last week, Mr. Wojciechowski, after the fact that our board was gracious enough to appoint him to his PBL position, he worked with our good friend in fifth grade, Mr. Solster, and they developed their first PBL unit. It was a Sulzberg revitalization. We had a lot of fun with that. We drew Mayor Wright in, we drew Michael Brunner in, we had a lot of stakeholders come to us and work on that project. We're excited about that and we're super duper proud about the work that Mr. Wojciechowski's doing across the districts. So looking to the 1819 school year. Oh, I just got the, I got the role.
They're really trying, no. It's not that hard.
We have goals for the 1819 school year. There they are. Take the opportunity when you can. We are forging some partnerships this year. We have partnerships, I'll be really fast here. We are one of 10 pilot schools across the state of New York. With the Board of Ed, it suggested to us that we continue carving out our path as this grade school will be a New York State clean, green, and healthy pilot school. We're going to take a look at the work we've done the last couple of years, we're going to look for areas to improve upon. We're working with very close friends at Sulzberg Food Pantry, and we're going to look to provide healthy snacks to students who either identify or refer to our teachers across the building. And our occupational therapist, Mrs. Debbie Wall, she's working with our K to two team to install markings in our K to two wing to give students opportunities to participate in kinesthetic activities as they're walking across the building. If that goes well, we'll install across the rest of the building at an affordable price as well. Last piece, we flipped our faculty meetings this year after I went to an ed camp in North Rockland last year in March. It was a really enlightening experience. The heart of the matter is the first 10, 15 minutes of our faculty meetings, we come together as a family, we talk about issues that are important to our building, and now we're breaking out in the second half of our faculty meetings into, what we call, network sessions. Network sessions are led by myself or other teachers across the building, and really it's about promoting teacher voice, teachers as co-designers. We're asking our teachers to collaborate as much as possible. They like the opportunity to meet with one another and they're leading sessions as well. Thank you so much.
Ask but not least Viola.
I think we've got to go backwards next year and start with a B. This is past my bedtime. But most of you know me as Christine Johnson, very proud of principle of Viola, but also the very fast-talking principle of Viola, that you don't know that as I get closer to midnight, I talk much slower. So hopefully I can make my four minutes. Viola Elementary's mission statement, because I didn't see my city and my hands aren't going. Viola Elementary educates all students to be self-directed, self-disciplined, critical thinkers, problem solvers, responsible citizens, leaders, and lifelong learners. We achieve this through teacher and student leadership, community help, and wellness. To meet our mission, we provide students with opportunities at the both local, state, and national levels. We set the stage for active engagement, risk-taking, creative experience, and innovation. Below our highlights are some of the ones that we highlighted. Achieved 3,000 state and national winners. The annual Eleanor Boeheim Earth Day Contest winners, multiple years. State Senate Essay Contest winners. Our Grade Four portfolio presentation at the New York State Reading Association was honored for our portfolio work. Our awarded student grant writers, we're, our students writing them and we're being awarded them, which has been something that we were complimented on and very rare in elementary school. The pre-K district program, we're very proud of, and we're very thankful to a teacher leader who brought that forward, a couple of teacher leaders in our building. Our PBL participation with Ken Wojciechowski. This year, they promoted a playground design and little types to the Winnie Playground, and is going to institute a piece of that design into a playground structure of some sort. Basically, they had to come up with the financials, they had to come up with handicap access, they had to come up with everything from where they were designing, the kinds of materials, where they would cut costs, and as fifth graders, I was so impressed with what they came up with. Our teaching and engineering lab has created a robotics team and now running for the second year in a row. And our summer learning challenges that have taught kids that learning doesn't end in June and lives in the community around us every day. Okay, I'm in. If they say I'm good, I'm good. Our partnerships make us stronger, provide learning opportunities, and bring our community closer. Community this year, we cycled for survival for a student who taught us more than we could ever have taught her. We made thousands of dollars for brain cancer research. Our Viola family donations, we have created Thanksgiving gift baskets for this year, we were already giving out. Shop write gift cards for our struggling families, codes for kids, and a student leader created a sneaker and shoe drive that not only our school, but other schools sent shoes and sneakers over. District Office did as well. And he had truckloads of shoes that his mother couldn't fit, even a truck had to come to get them. So even our whole community as a district supported our school, and that is something that is amazing. Our food pantry donations, one of the things that we have been able to do is support from our garden, our food pantry donations, and we've been very proud of that as well. One of the things that I'm very proud of that our teacher leaders have done is creating an environment where students are getting to do things that really do showcase and get them to learn and tie social science, math, and other areas of mindfulness to different things they're doing. We created a bird club. I have beautiful birds that from the moment I get out of my car are coming across our parking lot, and will sometimes often scare me as they come by my window, but they're beautiful, and they have taught them what kinds of birds they are, how many, how to collect them, how to count them, all kinds of different kinds of migration patterns. I've been so impressed what kids can tell me about birds. The school garden has also done something nice. Tetland is in Hillburn. It's a sanctuary farm in Hillburn. It's a nonprofit organization, and we're taking some of our garden and feeding it to the animals to support these animals who have been abused or had had fallen some kind of tragedies or bad luck along their lifetime, and our students are really learning empathy from also doing this environmental project. We participate, keep Rockland beautiful, and we have a recycling team. One of the things that I talked about was our highlights is student leadership. One of the things as a partnership is our fifth grade started a robotics team, wrote an ONR grant last year, and now our second graders wrote one last year in the spring, and they won it. And they wrote it in second grade language. So I was very impressed, and I was impressed with the partnership between our older and younger students. We continue to improve our STEAM opportunities. You can see some of them there. We spoke to some of them in her presentation. And also, there's our partnership between schools and our reach organization. Our teacher here, two of them, Jen Kangrow, Ms. Rolston, Montebello, and Viola got together and wrote a grant called Kid Power with kids' activity trackers. And so that was something that was nice to see that combined our district initiative of STEAM and two schools and two teachers from two special classes, and so thank you for the work that you did on that. Teacher leadership. Teacher leadership has been pivotal in promoting literacy by looking closer at our data-driven instruction and motivating students to love reading and writing all the way from pre-K all the way to grade five. This year, we hit all of our goals in reading. We have done a nice job in achieving 3,000. The CEO of the company called us to say, how do you do it year after year? How do you keep up the amount of engagement that you get your students on? And I have to say, it's not just one part, it is all of the parts that work together. The parents buying in, the kids buying in, the teachers buying in, the district administration who supports it for us to have it. So we have seen 180 lifestyle growth in our students across our school. We have 66% of students exceeding expected growth in our reading. We see a lot of growth in our students as they're not only enjoying the books, but they're enjoying reading and writing about what they're learning. Our pre-K to K early intervention team was created as we started to look at, how can we do a better job at getting kids to catch them before they go into AIS for early intervention services? We looked sort of like what Connor had done. We're looking at some of the tests, we did the NWEA, the DIAL. We had a hunch that, as part of one of my administrative interns in teacher leadership, to look at the research points that early rapid naming and rhyming have something to do with, looking at that and finding if we can find it early enough, those kids who struggle coming into us in the kindergarten, that we identify, we put early interventions into place, we can keep kids from having to have to go into those kinds of services. I was impressed with the work we did. Again, I credit the team and the amount of time that we put into working with parents. We're already seeing those students making some progress, and Karen's already saying, oh my gosh, I see a difference, and we're only just beginning in December. Gotta talk faster. Okay. So our Viola achievements.
Can't talk fast. I don't know how you do it all.
So Viola achievements in math, we did not make all of our marks, but again, I think that we are hitting some challenges that we need to turn into opportunities as our changing demographics in the sense that we are so excited to have seven different languages spoken in our school, which is something that is sometimes in the city, you hear of seven to nine to 10 languages. We had nine last year, we had seven this year. It is a challenge for us, but an opportunity to learn how to work with these students, how do we help them with academic vocabulary, academic concepts that they're struggling with. So thanks to Lee who helped us, we really wanted to look into data-driven dialogue and look at our trends across, now that we've been doing our CISA for a number of years. So we started this trend team, and we're hoping that with that work, we can try to service our populations a little bit better and figure out better strategies that will help us to be helping them to reach their personal best. In our social, emotional media, we are dedicated to educating the whole child, as you heard some of our colleagues talk about. We use our PPS and CAWS. We have our Character Emotion Bus Program. We've seen a dramatic results in doing that. Our health and wellness, we have no food celebrations. We have our AI and mindfulness mantras, our yoga exercises and stretches run by our students. Our brain breaks, we have Kelsa de Frog, as you heard Connor talk about. But this year, my one personal thing was to improve our recess referrals. We keep seeing that students still have trouble handling personal conflict, handling personal space, have followed their changing rules or changing games, and other kids getting upset. So I researched Dr. Rieses, who had worked with us on our Level Behavior Program in the beginning that we did a number of years ago, really months starting, probably 10 years ago. And he came and talked to me. We met, and thanks to PPS who supported Dr. Rieses and the Board of Ed supporting us on that, we did put it in place, and the students are loving Student Choice at Rieses. They're loving the empowerment, and we are seeing already that kids are engaging better than we had seen them before, so hopefully by next year, I'll be able to tell you some new improvements there. We are hopefully going to get our sensory hallway put into place after Thanksgiving. We were lucky that Ellen Stone, our OT, was able to work for Magic, and this is something we've wanted to do for a long time, and it will be installed for free. So we can't do better than that. Our Viola community outreach, we have started something new called The More You Know, and that's to engage our parents and why are we doing what we're doing? So every Thursday night, the only communication we send out is at 7:00 PM, and it tells them all kinds of things. Our teachers do it, our special staff, areas, we all participate in sending something different out each Thursday, so everybody's a part of that. We participated for the second year in a row with our Start with Hello program, and that's to teach all of our community that it's important to be inclusive. Those are all of the languages we have spoken at Viola on those signs. We greet parents and kids in the morning on the first day of that week where we start our Start with Hello through Sandy Hook program. Multicultural Night, this was our first year, we meet three different families, showcase their cultures. We had over 10 cultures, and like I said, we speak about several different languages at Viola. We created a way to promote out to families through Twitter, thanks to Lee who showed me Twitter, I never knew what that was. And we now tweet all the time. And so every grade level has a leader, and we made sure that we tweet out across all grade levels, in all special areas, so that we're a unified communication across our school. And thanks to our PTA for our community outreach, because last year, we instituted Candle, which is their I Think and I Care program, which is helping students in grade four with peer pressure, goal-setting, creating goals and better communication and digital citizenship. So one of the things we hope to continue is to meet our vision, which is we're committed to achieve our vision by working together to achieve success. So I just want to take us back to our starting thought, our similarities, bring us to a common ground. I think you saw many of the things we have in common, but wow, how fascinating are our differences and how much we can learn from each other. So I want to thank you for leading your schools, for your presentations. And to all of our wonderful teachers who provide these, and all of our staff who provide these incredible opportunities for our students. Questions?
Great job. No, thank you.
No questions, but thank you very, very much for the hard work you're doing in high elementary schools. It's impressive and really kudos to you. And thank you for sharing all the great work happening in every one of our families. We're so proud. Thank you. And for the teachers for making the policy. Thank you all. And thanks for your patience today and the time. Next is an information item, the Audit Committee Report. Ms. Reemer, it'll be really quick.
How fast can I fly? We had an Audit Committee meeting yesterday. We had an Audit Committee meeting yesterday. Members were there, Don, Karen, Matt, her, and myself. There were a couple of people from the public who came. The auditor that was here earlier tonight made a presentation for cover-to-cover basically of the whole financial statement, and then he just, we asked some questions of him, and he was great. He answered everything. I even asked him for some copies of some things that have changed in government, you know, standards board, so he provided those to me as well. And then we adjourned. We started at 6:05 and ended at 7:05.
Lucky you. Thank you very much for the hard work the committee's doing, and Ms. Turner and Ms. Reemer. Discussion item, if it's okay with my colleagues, I'd like to table this item regarding National Convention to the next meeting. Is everybody okay with that? Item table, thank you. Public participation regarding non-agenda items. Same rules apply as a public participation one. You can state your name and your affiliation with the district's school district.
Joseph Corvagna. I have a daughter, I have a Montebello. We had a difficult conversation, guys. I mentioned this to the superintendent for this time for the first time, but we have a very scary situation at the school regarding picking up our children. We used to pick up our kids at the front door, and we could park in a safe location from the school. I hope this board raises their insurance policy by 100,000% because they get killed. Right now, the way this situation is at the school, we'll get hit by a bus. This without question will happen. There's six slots in the front of the school where we could park yet to pick up our kids. That's it. Okay? When we pick up our children, okay, we're using kindergarten, first, second, third, a young kid, we have to walk to the back of the school by the gate. Buses whiz by our kids. I'm asking this board to immediately change that policy tonight before a kid gets killed. The policy was changed without any notice, any way, shape, or form, top half, except for one email that went out and a phone call. What is this school year? It's outrageous. I'm not going to stick to this. The parents are outraged at the way this is handled. I'm asking this board tonight to immediately ask for the I'm asking the board tonight to immediately ask for the dismissal to be resumed the way it was, and to have proper, proper study be conducted on how it should be picked up. I don't appreciate as a parent and as a father to endanger my children. I have brought my three-and-a-half-year-old and my seven-and-a-half-year-old to the back of the lot to pick, where I pick my kid up, and that kid's bus whizzing by my kids. Guys, it's not safe. And the poor excuse I get from the school, and it's a poor excuse, is that the bus doesn't leave. That's the poor excuse I get from the school. Get the bus there earlier if you have to, but I don't want immediately to be asked by the board. I told them tonight, it was a course of attention, it was a little wherever. Okay, let us understand, there's some kind of situation with picking up a big kid, so I have some kind of court order. I have to understand. That's what the parents were told. It was poorly handled, and I'm telling them right now, someone's going to get hit. The buses are whizzing by our kids as we're walking out to the back lot, and we have pretty little get by the car backing off.
Ms. Corvagna, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Doctor, have you addressed this with the administration?
I, I have been told that this was just the principal of the school. You can speak to her regarding that issue.
Please write something to Dr. Adams and try to copy the report.
I appreciate that, because it's not a time to let it go. Thank you.
Any further comments? Just go. Please, again, introduce yourself first to my, thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Jacob Grublat. I live in Amont for the past three years. First, I want to thank all of you that's laying out here. And also, I want to give a special thanks to the bus drivers, someone who want to talk regarding transportation. They don't want to take our precious children every day to school, but we're going to take them as well. They're being put aside. The reason why I'm here is I do send my child to private schooling, and I do get transportation in the morning. But coming home, my school got only one time that the kid can come home from, is four o'clock, because the school has an option to choose one time when he can come home, is four o'clock. So he finishes at three, that means he has this wait of four. I have another child on the playground, the same dismissal time, three o'clock, so I pay extra hundred dollars a month that the babysitter can hold my baby for another fifteen minutes. So my wife has time to go pick up from the school and then goes pick up from here. I pay the taxes. I think I have the right shit to get the transportation. I would like to know if I can address it to, and who can help me out with this, because I've tried calling, I've been going to voicemails a whole lot, and I would like to know who can help me out tonight.
Please address transportation questions to our district transportation department. Feel free to copy. What is the email, Dr. Adams, to address transportation?
I've done it already. We passed that.
Did you receive an answer, sir?
No, no answers. And I called, and they, they said I got forward to a few people. I called, and I was talking to a specific person, I have to look up the name again, and they told me, they told me when I asked for the specific, they said you can't talk to her. You can email her.
So I'm going to give you two emails. Please take note of them.
Okay, just a second. I'll, I guess I'll take it right out, so I can keep up everybody.
Yeah, absolutely. So just for anybody, transportation@sofocentral.org is the correct email. And feel free to copy the Board of Education and Dr. Douglas Adams, our superintendent. Board of Education will go to, the email is boardofeducation@sofocentral.org, spelled out, and D. Adams at sofocentral.org. And if you didn't get them, feel free to come over. Thank you.
Just another thing. I want to know about going into a cul-de-sac. I know it's been an argument that we go on and off, on and off. Is that a state law or that's a Department of Education protocol?
I can't answer that question accurately, so I'd like you to include that as well, because what I've learned through my experience the last few years is that it varies depending on measurement and size and turns, and there are safety concerns on some compared to others, so I can't really advise.
Yes. The reason why I'm asking is, they don't pick up from the house, of course, and other private buses do come into my cul-de-sac, and even company buses from the ones that pick up my kids do come into my units in my cul-de-sac. I guess that's not the big issue that we're having right now. I just can't understand why they would make the pregnant woman run to the corner every morning when they have another child at home, or they have a baby at home, or sick child at home, why the babysitter to go wait for one of the kids to die. I would be willing to do that every day, but unfortunately, I've got to work early to be able to pay up these taxes that we have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. At the end of the meeting, I'll provide you. Thank you, Kynan. Any further comments? Seeing that there are no further comments, we will close this portion of the agenda. Dr. Adams, closing comments for the towns schools. Okay, so at this time, I would like a motion to yes and happy Thanksgiving and a happy and healthy to you and your family. Thank you for being here and your patience today. I'd like to motion to adjourn the meeting of the Suffolk Central School District. Ms. Reimer, second, Mr. McKenzie, all those favorites, if I may say aye. Thank you.